We call the meeting of the Falmouth School Committee to order. And actually, I get a motion to go into executive session. We'll do the salute to the flag and all that after we come back.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining. It is expected the school committee will return to public session.
May I get a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. We are in executive session. We will be back shortly. I'm going to call the meeting of the Falmouth School Committee back to order. Please join me in the salute from the flag.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I do ask you to please just stand for a couple more minutes? I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Curtis McKee, who was a longtime teacher and administrator at Falmouth High School, English teacher. Thank you. First item on the agenda is public session, public comment. Please limit, oh, excuse me, before we get to that, I need to remind everyone that this meeting is being telecast and recorded on Channel 14. I also remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting to first notify me as chair, and I will then inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. Anne, I have a quote for you tonight. This one is from T.H. White out of The Once and Future King. Quote, "The destiny of man is to unite, not to divide. If you keep on dividing, you end up as a coalition of monkeys throwing nuts at each other out of separate trees." All right. First item on the agenda is public session, public comment. So please limit comments to two minutes per individual. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement, where the individual may request an item to be placed on the future agenda. So just so everyone understands that, this is if you want to make comments on anything that is not on the agenda. Is there any public comment to see? Come up and identify yourself.
My name is Aliza Daverne. I graduated from Falmouth High School in 2015, and I am here tonight speaking on behalf of myself, my mom, who was a school committee member for six years, and the many FHS alumni that stand in solidarity with the group of students behind me. I think we all understand the many complexities and layers to this issue presented here today, especially the students who have been forced to confront them head-on, but I think, to be quite honest, we have forgotten the heart of this debate, as it has snowballed into a power struggle between a determined student body and a dismissive administration. In October of my senior year of high school, a recent graduate named A.J. Fernandez passed away in his sudden car accident. I'm sure many of you remember the great toll and shocking loss this had on our community. And as heartbreaking and incomprehensible as this tragedy was, there was one thing I took away from it that completely changed me as a person. The night after the accident took place, our entire school organized a maroon and white day simply over social media. The next day, when you walked the halls, it was completely silent, and even younger students like myself, who didn't know A.J. as well, felt the overwhelming sense of mourning. By third period, I was sitting in Mr. Mack's honors English class, and you could feel in the room, everyone was just trying to hold back tears. We were expecting a quiz, but instead, Mr. Mack gave us a much-needed heart-to-heart, and he told us that in events like the death of a student that are just an absolute tragedy, it seems like there's no reason or no meaning to take away. But as we learned with every book we read and every day we went into his classroom, there is always something to take away. There's always a silver lining. Every single student and teacher in the school was wearing the school colors, standing in solidarity as one family with shoulders leaned on, and on that day, all of the other stupid aspects of high school didn't matter, because everyone felt such a strong sense of togetherness that is absolutely essential to the healing process. And my wonderful honors English teacher was kind enough to point that up to us, and how proud he was to be part of a town that would organize in such a wonderful way after such a horrible and unexplainable event. That is the reaction that this group of students deserves, and they don't get to have it. I don't want to exploit or compare any tragedies here today, but when I heard about the fight for Fuller Field, my heart absolutely broke for these kids, because I know that that sense of unity and support and teamwork was the only thing that kept my friends and I going in that awful time of despair. Senior year is stressful and emotional enough, and losing two incredible members of the senior class just months before they were about to walk across that stage is something that I think many of us cannot even fathom. I am absolutely appalled, embarrassed, and a little bit disgusted by the way that administration has responded to their students' request to fulfill a classmate's dying wish. If you have ever lost someone too soon, I think you know that the actions that have transpired around this date, around this debate, are wrong. Friends and classmates of James and Owen have made phone calls, come to meetings, raised money over $20,000, and found a solution to every problem that stood between them and the graduation that those two angels deserve. And let me tell you something, I was a really good student in high school, but my, May of my senior year, I wasn't 100 feet within a school building. They are a school committee tonight. They are all coming together in ways that I don't think anybody in my grade ever has. They have fought in spite of incredible pressure, opposition, and resistance from school officials who have made the mistake of underestimating them. Do you think it is a good idea to send these 18-year-olds out into the world, especially in today's political atmosphere, with the sense that no matter how hard they fight for something, there are always people at the top who will be able to undermine them and push them down? Do you really think that parking or weather issues will trump someone's wish to graduate the way they want to? There is an entire community of voters here today who are trying to tell you something, and there is a reason for this committee. You have the power to right this wrong, and these kids are pouring their heart out to you in a last-ditch effort. This is probably the only time my mom still wishes she was on this committee, because it is a lot of work. It's a lot of hard work, and it's a hard job, but this is a really easy decision, and I'm asking you to take a vote. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. So just so I can be clear, we're in public comment now. Public comment is to comment on issues that are not on the agenda. Falmouth High School 2017 graduation is on the agenda. Everybody will get an opportunity to speak when we deal with that agenda item, okay?
Okay.
So does anybody else have a public comment tonight? In other words, would you like to make any comments on anything that's not on the agenda?
If I may, I think there might have been a bit of confusion. I think the students thought that they were able to talk to the public.
That's quite all right.
I'm just, I'm just.
That's quite all right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I was just being clear.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to make any comments about issues that are not on the agenda? Mr. Anthony.
I may have comments later, but I just came tonight to congratulate Sue Augusta. I was her first superintendent. I sat in that chair where Nancy is, and I had to take time out to congratulate her for 26 years of service on the committee. I was superintendent when she first got elected. We had a lot of fun. We had some good debates. I won't tell you what the big issue was at that time, because there's too many students here. But I do want to thank you, Sue, for your great service.
Thank you.
And Nancy, thank you for being a great superintendent, and as the decisions are made in the committee, you're all trying to do the right thing. Keep it up, keep going, and good luck to you, and we'll see you again.
Thank you very much.
Be good. Thanks.
Is there any other public comment on issues not on the agenda? Okay. Student vibe reports that Theodora unfortunately could not be with us tonight, so moving on. Next item on the agenda is Falmouth High School 2017 graduation. So let me, by explanation, explain why this is on the agenda and how we're going to go about this tonight. So Ms. Moynihan made a formal request that this be put on the agenda. The school committee prides itself in terms of being transparent and inclusive, so I felt like it needed to be on the agenda. As you know, the school committee has taken the stance in the past that the decision on where graduation is held is not a school committee decision. It is a decision that is up to the superintendent and the principal. So I don't want to go through and read all of the emails that went back and forth between myself and Ms. Moynihan, between Ms. Moynihan and Mr. Miller, district council and so forth, but I would like to just take a minute to summarize what the main points are. Then I want to give Ms. Moynihan an opportunity to speak, if there's anything that she feels like I've left out of that. Then I want to give the school committee an opportunity to make any comments that they would like to make on the issue, and then I'll open it back up to public comment for anybody that would like to comment on it, and then I'll bring it back for any final comments for the school committee. Everybody clear on that? Everyone will have an opportunity to speak? Okay? So, and Ms. Moynihan, please understand that this is not meaning to disagree with anything that you said. I'm just going to lay out the arguments that went back and forth, I guess, between Ms. Moynihan and Alan Miller. Just so everybody knows, Alan Miller is a principal with the law firm that we have used in Falmouth since 1965, I think. They've worked with us, they work in the area of school law and so forth, and they've worked with us on lots of issues. So the first issue that I understood that Ms. Moynihan brought up was that the school committee is charged by the Town of Falmouth Charter to oversee all operational issues of the Falmouth Public Schools. Mr. Miller's response to that is that the school, is that what the charter says is that the school committee shall have general charge of all public schools in the town and shall have the powers and duties of school committees as provided by general law. In other words, what the charter says is that the school committee's function is a function of what the Massachusetts general laws say. Okay. Ms. Moynihan has said that delegation of authority is expected, and by the way, all of these emails and everything are public record. If anybody would like copies of the emails, you can please contact me, or you can contact Chair, and they are public record, and they are available to anybody that would like to see them. Delegation of authority is expected but does not relieve the school committee of its duty, obligations, or responsibility under the Massachusetts general laws or the Town Charter to the students and general public for the public schools and their management and operation. Once the issue is brought to the committee by the public, it goes beyond usual and customary operations. Mr. Miller's response to that is Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 37, sets forth the powers and duties of school committees. These are delineated as selection of the superintendent of schools, review and approval of budgets for public education, and establishment of educational goals and policies. In contrast, pursuant to Section 59 of Chapter 71, the superintendent is charged with responsibility for managing in a fashion consistent with state law and the policy determinations of the school committee. Choice of graduation venue falls within the superintendent's decision-making authority. Your, referring to Ms. Moynihan's, reliance on the premise that the Falmouth School Committee has delegated the decision to the superintendent is misplaced. The school committee does not have the authority to make the decision in the first place, and thus did not delegate it to the superintendent. Another point Ms. Moynihan made was the Falmouth School Committee Superintendent Operating Protocols state that the school committee is to, quote-unquote, "represent the needs, interests, and achievement of all students in the district and place these above all else in the decisions we make," end quote. Mr. Miller's response to that was the protocols also state that the school committee should, quote, "exercise leadership in vision, planning, policymaking, evaluation, accountability, and advocacy on behalf of the students and district while respecting the authority of the superintendent and district staff to manage day-to-day operations." Point by Ms. Moynihan is the Falmouth School Committee Policy Manual states that the school committee accepts ultimate responsibility for all facets of school operations. There is a policy, which is Policy AE, which lists, which does say that, and then it lists a long list of maintain a program of accountability consistent with following elements. It lists five different elements, none of which talk about operational oversight. The last thing that Ms. Moynihan said was the authority of a school committee to make this decision is also supported by similar actions of other school committees in Massachusetts that have appropriately exercised authority to do so. Mr. Miller's response is, "In none of these cases is there any indication that there was any disagreement between the school committee and the superintendent. Further, just because a school committee took action and there was no objection to the action does not deem the action to be within the school committee's authority." So again, I'm not arguing one point over the other. My role as school committee chair is, quite frankly, to listen, and I rarely think that I'm the smartest guy in the room, and I certainly don't in this case. But what I have done is consistently followed the direction of school council, which is Ms. Miller, and followed the direction of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, who has said the same thing. And that's why what I've said, and I think what the school committee has gone along with so far, is that this is not our responsibility, it's not our purview, to make this decision. By putting this on the agenda tonight, what I'm going to do is going to give the school committee an option, an opportunity, if you will, to weigh in on that. If you think I'm wrong, then we can certainly take a vote on that. So I'm going to just quiet now. Ms. Moynihan, since you're the one who brought this, again, I don't want to get into a debate back and forth and so forth, but if you have additional pieces that you would like to present to the committee, I give you the opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs and members of the committee. My name is Laura Moynihan. I am a Falmouth attorney, also a parent of Falmouth High School senior. I appreciate you putting this matter on the agenda. I think it was the right thing to do. It's something that should be debated in the public forum. I appreciate you summarizing Mr. Miller's comments. Unfortunately, I wasn't privy to some of the responses that you cited tonight, particularly in terms of the review of the local laws and policies. But in any event, I will go through that relatively quickly. I've provided you a letter outlining the legal authority of the school committee to make this decision being requested. I hope you all have read it. If you haven't read it, I have a copy for you here, which I can hand out, and I've also included what I think are the relevant portions of your school committee manual to follow. Anybody wants one?
So just so you're aware, the school committee has seen every email that's gone back and forth between you and I and you and Ms. Miller.
All right. So the responses that Mr. Miller provided you on some of the issues on the operating protocol, I did not see those, but that's fine. I have indicated to you that Mr. Miller, who reviewed the authority of the school committee, in my opinion, when I was conversing with him, did not consider the local law, the Town Charter, past practice of the school committee, or the school committee operating procedures, policies, and stated protocols. I advised him that his advice was not complete, and his opinion should be corrected. When I pointed that out, I was told by him that he was not going to debate the issue any further, and it would be his last communication to me on the matter. That's the last I heard from him, and I think that's unfortunate, to say the least. I think that your quoting of the Town Charter is actually incomplete. I've given you a copy of the Town Charter. It does give the school committee the power of general charge of the public schools. It says, "in conformance with general laws, the charter, representatives, laws of town meeting, and local bylaws." So number one point is that the powers of the school committee are not exclusively set out in the Mass general laws. Your posted operational protocols, yes, indicate the superintendent is to be in charge of the day-to-day management of the schools. In my opinion, this is not a day-to-day management of the schools. This is not a day-to-day operational issue. It goes way beyond that. Your policy manual also states that the decision of the superintendent, decisions of the superintendent are subject to school committee review when action must be taken within the school system where the school committee has provided no guides for administrative action. I have found no reference in the school committee policy manual that specifically states that the superintendent is in charge of deciding where to hold a graduation ceremony. I read the entire manual. In fact, the school committee approved its meeting schedule in June 2016 that included June 3, Falmouth High School graduation. It's included as part of your meeting schedule. That in itself should mean you determine the location. If the open meeting law is driving the inclusion of the graduation on your meeting schedule, then the open meeting law is determining that you must determine the location. Your policy manual states that the school committee reserves to itself the ultimate decision on all matters concerning general policy. That is why the school committee has taken up similar decisions in the past, this school committee, and examples I've given you are the Marconi Beach, the additional sports programs at Falmouth High School. There are others. We all know there are others. Those issues have been decided by you because of the overwhelming public concern and involvement of the public, and the accountability of the school committee to the public places this decision within the school's committee's authority. That's the bottom line. The ultimate power and authority rests with the elected school committee. The people and their school district, which is what is stated in your manual, in your operational protocols, is something you are to honor. The people and their school district. The manual also says that you are to take in, you, the school committee, not the superintendent, the school committee, is to take into consideration student opinion in policies that directly affect them. You, the school committee. How are you supposed to do that if this is a decision that you are not entitled to decide? That makes no sense. Having the ultimate power of management of the public schools in accordance with the Town Charter means that you have that authority. You have the authority to review the decision that has been made by the superintendent and decide if you agree with that or not. To not take up that decision and to say you don't have the authority to review that decision, that's wrong. I think that is not what the purpose and intent is of our Town Charter in giving you the authority, and it's certainly not what the elected community expects of you. It's no different than other decisions I have said that other school committees have made. There were objections to those other school committee decisions on where to hold the graduation venue. There was much debate. I reviewed the school committee minutes from Hamilton, from Hall, from Greenfield as examples. And as I said, if Mr. Miller had included me in his additional thoughts, I would have shared all of that with him, but I was not given that benefit. I was dismissed. The students have talked about how moving the graduation to Fuller Field will be of benefit. That is what a yes vote will bring. But what about a no vote, or a decision of this committee to not take up a vote at all? What will that bring? A no vote will have a profoundly negative impact on this community, not just these high school seniors. It will be a vote that they will carry with them the rest of their lives negatively. We don't want that. We want them to go off into the world and hold Falmouth in their hearts as their town, their community, their place where they are loved, appreciated, and listened to. We want them to come back here, raise their families here, to work here, to be teachers, to be police officers, fire department EMTs, to work in the scientific community, to run for town boards and committees and town meeting, to work with nonprofits and volunteer boards, to coach sports, to assist in the arts and music, to donate their time to the countless facilities and organizations that make Falmouth great. That's what we want from this senior class. I expect there are administrative reasons that you may discuss as to why Fuller Field should not be the venue for graduation. I submit to you that none of those reasons are things that cannot be overcome. If additional approvals or consents are needed, we can pursue those. Students and parents before you are ready, willing, and able to assist. You know that. None of those reasons can overshadow the profound effect a no vote will have on this senior class and the faith in their community. This is a unique year, a unique situation, and one worthy of a change in venue. No one at this point wants to look out over the class and see the empty seats that a no vote will bring. That would be tragic, and it's unnecessary. Riverside has indicated in its letter to the students, which I'm sure you've seen, that the bigger tragedy of this year is if the graduation is colored by anger and bitterness. That's what's happened. The graduation is colored by anger and bitterness right now with the students and with parents, I would submit. A no vote, no matter how it is explained or justified, will only send a message to an entire senior class that we, as a community, are not listening to them, not supporting them, not helping them move on in their lives in what they consider the best healing manner possible. That is how they will view it, regardless of what reasons against are brought forward. We know that the authority on this issue, some may consider a gray area. I disagree wholeheartedly that it is that, a line drawn in the sand, to suggest that the school committee does not have the power to make this decision. And I urge you, when you have a gray area, that you exercise the authority that the electorate has given you, you stand up for the students, and you do what's right. I'm asking you, as members, to please stand up for the students and this community, make a motion and second it to move graduation to Fuller Field, and for all to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. I haven't called them.
You have to get up.
No, you have to wait until you're called up. As I said, the school committee is going to get an opportunity to speak, and then it'll be opened up. So what we have here is a disagreement. We have disagreement between Ms. Moynihan and Mr. Miller. And this is a great civics lesson. So think about things. How do laws get made? The General Assembly makes the laws, and then the executive is supposed to carry out the laws. Often times what happens is there's some disagreements, and what happens then is somebody takes an action or somebody doesn't take an action, and somebody feels that they've been wrong, and so they bring suit, and then it goes in front of the courts, and the courts make decisions. Unfortunately, in this case, there is no case law. So we have a disagreement between district council and Ms. Moynihan here, and it's not insignificant. Now, you can't just kind of say, well, just go ahead and do something, because it really has ramifications as you move forward in terms of the relationship between the school committee and the superintendent, and all the way down. So in one option here, we choose not to make anything. Ms. Moynihan, anybody else could bring us to court and say, you didn't do your job. We would probably, he would probably fight it, because our district council has said that. Massachusetts Association of School Committees could chime in and fight it. We could make a decision here, and quite frankly, Massachusetts Superintendent's Association could fight it, saying that we're overstepping our laws. We sit here listening, and we have a disagreement. So at that point, I want to turn this back over to the school committee for any comments that they would like to make, and then, as I said, I will let any of the public make any comments that they would like to make. Walter first.
Your presentation to us was very effective, and I think, I think everybody on this committee feels that way. And I know Superintendent Taylor does because we've had one-on-one discussions about it. So, this is really an emotional issue. She and the principal are making their decision based on some practical issues. And, you know, if I miss some, she can fill me in. But I guess the one that would concern me the most is the safety issue. You know, as we all know, there's a lot of whack jobs out there that would take advantage of an open, totally open opportunity to create a problem. And I think our big concern is that we keep all of you people safe. I think that's important. Parking would be a nightmare down there for the people that would, would come. So, that's, that's an issue. I've also understand that there's a problem with handicapped accessibility for the, you know, for those that want to attend. So, I guess my feeling is, I think that the superintendent and the principal have looked at all of those things and figured the safest decision for everybody. Even though we respect your emotions and we all feel them, the safest thing is to have it at the field house. And I'm, I'm assuming, I don't know that you're going to get into it, but they will recognize those two students that are, are, are not going to be there. So, that will be, that will be addressed. And I also respect the work that Chairman Jacobs has put in on the legal aspect of it. So, I guess my conclusion is while I feel empathetic to the feelings that you all have, I think from a practical standpoint, I have to stand by the superintendent's decision and Mr. Jacobs' analysis of what we're legally entitled to do and, and pass.
Any other comments? Let's get moving. Kelly.
So, it's appropriate, I guess, to follow Walter because my comments are actually not at all related to those. I, I don't think that it's our place to make a decision about this. I think it's, it is an operational, an operational issue. And I also don't want to ask Nancy to reconsider or reevaluate her decisions because I don't know if I've ever worked with anyone that is more reflective and constantly reconsidering action than she is. So, I feel as though it would be, it would be redundant to ask her to reconsider any decision because she's already, I'm sure, reconsidered and reconsidered and reconsidered to make the best decision possible for, for our whole community. If I was forced to make a decision tonight, I would stand by the, the idea to not relocate graduation. And my issues are not administrative. They're not about parking. I'm concerned with the well-being of the entire student body, not just the students that we have heard from, because we've also heard from a lot of students and families who have asked us to not move it, which makes sense to me because grief is very strange. And some people feel the need to do stuff, and some people retreat, and some people reach out, and it's different for everyone. So, I would need, without being able to speak with every single family, I would need to make the decision that I think is the best for overall the student body. And then the other issue I have is equity. What do we do next year if we lose someone to suicide, or to cancer, or to another accident? What does this bring down the road in terms of being able to continue to be equitable in all of our decisions? So, I don't want to take action on it tonight. I am very happy with the process and the decision that has been made so far.
I wrote stuff because it's been emotional, so trying to just give some data. I want to say three things. I support Nancy's decision because I'm confident she has very much considered the trauma associated with the situation of moving graduation to a new venue. I'm also confident that she wants the merits of all 12 years to be highlighted at this graduation, which is the purpose of a graduation. I've attended conservatively 30 graduations in Falmouth over the years, and it's common for class speakers to delineate their freshman, sophomore, and junior experiences. I'm afraid that if you move this year's event to a different venue, past experiences, awards, and triumphs would be lost in transition. The second thing I would like to say has to do with the diss words that have been used to describe the actions of the administration. The media and some parents have said that we have dismissed. I've heard that word dismissed so many times, the request of the seniors. I think we have listened to the seniors. We were impressed by what they said, and we thought about it. In the end, I would say the diss word is disagree, not dismiss, because there are many, many elements of graduation. Some students have said they felt disrespected in making their request. I can dig this because it's scary to go up against the man, the administration. I would say to these students, I so respect you, but I disagree with you. So, the diss word, I think in both instances, is not dismiss or disrespect, but rather disagree. The third thing I want to say is that I feel deeply about the loss of any young person from Falmouth schools. For years, I have attended a memorial service sponsored by the Falmouth High School Honor Society during the month of May. I spoke at the last couple of them, actually. Typically, at these services, clergy from a local church speak, and the repertory singers from the high school perform a song. Perhaps we should all attend this ceremony this year and let the friends and families of the senior class know that the community does not forget them whatsoever. Okay? We will never forget the kids that passed away. And by the way, this year's service is scheduled for May 19th at 9:30 at Falmouth High School. Thank you.
Anybody else?
So, I had something prepared, and I threw it away, and I had something prepared, and I threw it away, and I've gone back and forth as to whether I was going to say something or not. As Kelly said, we've heard from a lot of different family members, community members. Personally, I've heard from community members, students, teachers, former alumni. I myself is an, I'm an alumni. I've spent a lot of time at Fuller Field, and I, I personally have a deep emotion to Fuller Field. However, not every kid does. And graduation is about every kid, not about a lot of kids, but every kid. There are kids that have never had any experience there. And for those that maybe aren't speaking as loudly, I think it's our job to speak for them as well. So, with that, I support Nancy.
Any other comments from the school committee? Susan?
If I may, I really want to thank these students that made the presentation to us. Just in my own deliberations, if you want to call it that, I want to reiterate as well as what Melissa and Kelly have said in regards to how many people we have heard from asking us to keep it at Falmouth High School, including students. We received a letter today from Mrs. Martha Vaccaro, and I'm sure she would allow me to read it, and because it sort of puts down how I've been feeling. And Mrs. Vaccaro was a longtime math teacher at the Lawrence School. And her letter reads, quote, I quote, "I have held off voicing my opinion on the issue of graduation for the class of 2017, but this morning's paper tells me that it's not over till it's over." Her letter is addressed to Nancy Taylor. "I applaud you for your courage in making the decision to stand by your decision, and I would like to tell you why. Graduation is a special event in the lives of all the graduates. For some, it will be their only chance to walk across the stage and hear their applause. It has not been an easy journey for those who may have overcome unknown obstacles to reach that moment. They may have never played a sport, or attended a dance, or participated in any extracurricular activities. We don't know the reason why, but they are receiving a diploma, and graduation be, should be a time of joy and pride. It should not be a memorial service for two young men who so tragically died in an accident just before Christmas. Of course, they will be missed on that day, no matter where the ceremony is held, but let's make it a celebration for all the seniors. On December 23rd, 1987, we lost our son Tom in another senseless accident. We continue to mourn and wonder what might have been, but I would never want our tragedy to cast a shadow on the triumphs of others." And we've heard from a lot of parents who have lost their children over the years, asking us to have graduation at, at the high school. And I still am confused in regards to the, whether this is our role or not. And I have to go along with Mr. Alan Miller's recommendations, as well as Massachusetts Association of School Committee, as well as Department of Education, where the former Commissioner of Education wrote after the Education Reform Act of 1993, "The principals of the educational administrators and managers of their schools shall supervise the operation and management of their schools and school property, subject to the supervision and direction of the superintendent." General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 59b. So, it's an emotional time, but I want all kids to be honored at graduation.
Anybody else?
So, I was so impressed with the presentation that many of you gave two weeks ago. You really, really made me think. And I've been thinking the whole time about this. My other role, my professional role, is that I am a school administrator. And wearing that hat, I know that I know the ins and outs of the students, of the teachers. I get the pulse of what's going on in the schools. And I trust that Nancy Taylor and Mary Gans get that pulse too, and they know what the best decision is for you and for the staff. And so, I have to support Nancy Taylor's decision on this. But I do want to say that I was just very, very impressed, and you really, really made me think. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes. This has been an extremely difficult position that I'm in at this point in time. I'm a educator, even though it's a few states away in Pennsylvania. And I was a principal for seven years, and we had about 3,000 kids in our graduating class, or, excuse me, our school, graduated over 700 kids a year. From the principal perspective, it, it, what tears me apart is I'm all about kids. I'm all about students. I'm all about your emotionality as well as my emotionality with this whole thing. To experience what you've gone through is, is unimaginable. As a principal, I've dealt with that. I've dealt with the same thing that you did firsthand. And it, it hurts, and it's hurt you in grief, and it's hurt you from so many different avenues. Now, a lot of you stuck with this, and a lot of you have these dreams of maybe what those two individuals had in regards to Fuller Field. So, I really sympathize with you. From the flip side, as now an administrator or a school committee member, I have to look at it from a professional standpoint. And the professional standpoint was the superintendent, Principal Gans, and Riverside to a degree, because they worked with kids that were grieving. And from the professional standpoint, from a counseling standpoint, I think the best venue at this point in time is the high school. Whatever we say, whatever we do, whatever this community looks at, there's going to be pros and cons on both sides. Nobody's going to walk away 100% satisfied. And if I go back to the principle in me and I say, all kids, I'm dealing with 230-plus kids. Do they all want the same thing? That's a question mark. You're here because a lot of you do, but there's also that segment that doesn't. And to me, graduation needs to be for all. And in the confinement of the high school, I think it would be for all. That's an opinion. I know it disappoints a lot of people. And I believe everybody in this room and everybody in this community needs to learn from this experience, and has learned a lot from this experience. And I'm sure there's going to be other comments, and I hope there are a lot more comments because a lot of us may have want to comment again. But I really sympathize with you, but I have to look at both sides, and I have to look at professional input because professionals should know what they're doing. And the majority, especially in this district, that I've learned that you have a strong superintendent and you have a strong high school leader. And that's what I'm going on. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. As promised, I want to turn it back over now to the audience, if you will, for any comments that they'd like to make. I will rec, please put your hand up, and I will certainly recognize you. Please come to the table, identify yourself.
My name is Erin Upton. I'm a parent of a graduating senior this year, not a Falmouth resident. She actually does school choice. I have been sitting on the sidelines throughout this whole process, hearing different impacts of, from money to, you know, all these different reasons why they could not have their graduation at Fuller Field. I have no problem with the decision in the end because I think it's going to be decision-made that you guys make. I guess my problem lies with, the school committee does have some weight in this. And if you're trusting in your superintendent completely, then I need to voice it. I'm disappointed in how it was handled. Because everybody in this room, I think their number one concern is the student body. And I think that when you have an assembly, whether it's a slideshow, if it's you and the principal making the decision, you both should be there. You both should have been visible. You both should have been able to hear out the students. I know most of these kids who are here were never heard out until the last meeting that I watched, and I sat here saying, oh my God, who's listening to these kids? So, I know there's inside politics. I know there's safety, but everything that you gave those kids, they went out and did their research, and they proved you wrong. They talked to police in Mashpee. They talked to police in Falmouth. They, if it's not handicapped accessible, how are you having football games there? That's illegal. So, I think what you did wrong, and I want to voice it, is that you should have had your student body vote. You should have heard every single student who's graduating, class of 2017, what they wanted, not what you thought was best. And I read all the information from Riverside Trauma. No one person said it shouldn't be there. So, all the, all the reasons that my daughter came home and told me, I kept sitting going, what? What? You, you didn't give them enough, and you had a slideshow. You weren't there for the whole slideshow, correct?
That Mrs. Gans ran the slideshow.
But you weren't there. You've never both been in the same room for the student body to be heard out.
We have been in several meetings together.
With limited, but limited students.
Of the student body. We invited students that wanted.
So, why didn't you have a vote? Why, why can't, why can't there be a vote for the class of 2017?
This is not, this is not, excuse me, this is not going to be an interrogation.
Okay, I'm just, that's.
You're welcome to, you've got the floor.
Yep. My point is that if we're all here in this room, and you look around and look at these kids, their faces, nobody wants a vigil. Nobody wants another memorial. We had that. They want to celebrate what they've been through. They've got their senior semi taken away. Another problem I have as a parent, their senior semi was to be held, and then it got canceled. If there's 20 kids that want to go, or if there's 60 kids that want to go, or if there's 200, you still have a senior semi. My daughter's graduating. She doesn't have a senior semi. She lost two classmates, and now she can't have her graduation where she wants to. And my view to her is to keep fighting because I think it keeps coming down to politics and reasons why. And I think you made a decision prematurely, and now people... She lost two classmates, and now she can't have her graduation where she wants to. And my view to her is to keep fighting, because I think it keeps coming down to politics and reasons why. And I think you made a decision prematurely, and now people are backing you up. But when you look at the reasons why you made that decision, you never heard out these students, and I think it's a total shame. So that's all I need to say. Thank you for your time.
So I understand how emotional things are. I'm going to ask that you refrain from clapping. Everybody will get an opportunity to speak. Who else would like to speak? Ma'am.
Hi, my name is Tracy Waggan. I am a parent of a graduating senior. I do have something prepared here, but I just wanted to touch base on a couple of things that have been mentioned. And one is safety of open spaces. We have football games, we have baseball games, they have Commodore games there. And I really strongly believe that we just can't always continuously operate in a vacuum of fear. I am 100% confident in the ability of our police department and our fire department to provide safety for our students in any place in this town. I also want to thank you for your time and your dedication, and all of the hard work that you do do for our students, as well as the teachers that you support as well. I am here asking that you please review the information that the students gave you on April 25th, to move the graduation to Fuller Field. Their presentation was incredible and launched conversation and support beyond the walls of Falmouth High School. Compelled by their presentation, their passion, their plea, I wrote to you on April 25th in support of the majority of the class of 2017's request to move graduation to Fuller Field. And that's the key, is the majority. You're never going to find anywhere that you're going to get 100% of anybody to be happy in any decision, anywhere. But if you have a majority, I really feel that you need to listen to that majority. Support those that are in the minority, but the majority, you're turning away the majority that are telling you that this would be the best place for them. Initially, the reason the students were given why was that the field was, because the cost was too high. Back in January, the senior class had their traditional senior auction, to fundraise for the senior activities, such as senior semi, senior banquet, and graduation. I personally remember being made aware at that time, that if a graduation was possible at Fuller Field, it would cost more, and it was up to them to raise that money. The community stepped up to that by their donations for the senior auction, as well as the tickets to attend were actually sold out. Personally, I know individuals who did not have a student in that class, but bought tickets and/or made donations in order to specifically support the idea of having graduation for the class of 2017 on Fuller Field. At that time, there was no mention of trauma, no mention of why they wanted it there, why wouldn't they want it there? I never asked why, actually, because it just made sense. I just knew how much unity and happiness that field holds, and I supported what the students wanted for their graduation. Many schools hold graduations on their football field, it's not a crazy request. As noted in their presentation, the students have solved that financial problem, as well as the other problems, reasons, or excuses that were given to them. How would you have voted that night, that meeting, if you knew that the decision was actually yours to make? The majority of the class of 2017 wanted graduation on Fuller Field, back on that last victory of the undefeated season, after the season that the entire Falmouth community came together for. They spoke of it then, but it wasn't on the agenda yet. Midterms were on the forefront, college applications needed to be completed, they weren't planning graduation yet, they were basking in glory and pride and happiness. It wasn't December 22nd yet. The absolute tragic loss of Owen Higgins and James Lavin brought our entire community to its knees. But make no mistake about it, if that horrible accident had not occurred, Owen and James would be standing with their friends and their classmates, fighting for this chance to have one more happy memory on Fuller Field. This is what the majority of the class of 2017 wants. It's not a commemoration for Owen and James, it's a celebration, a moment of victory, a moment of pride, a moment of happiness. It is their graduation, and they have shown how it can be done. I respectfully request that you listen with your heart, as well as your mind, to the voices of the majority of the class of 2017 and support them. It took great strength and courage for them to put their presentation together and stand before you two weeks ago. It takes even more to continue to stand up. It also takes great courage to change minds, to change decisions, to change what has always been done. My plea is that you find your courage to stand behind them and move graduation. There is an opportunity to do something incredibly lifting for the students and our community, an opportunity for healing, an opportunity for graduation to truly be a celebration of all, not just a robotic chore. It is not a graduation ceremony for the administration, it is a graduation ceremony for the students. Graduation was held at Fuller Field before, when it needed to be. Why not have it there when it is wanted? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrew Parkinson. I graduated two years ago, in the class of 2015. I've known, just to start off, I've known James and Owen since they were in diapers. I have a little brother who played hockey with them, played baseball, played everything. So I've known them for a long time, and they were like little brothers to me. For them to, like, I hear all what you guys are saying, that really, like, makes sense from your point, but at the same time, you have to think of the kids. Everyone here is here because they want to be at Fuller Field, and I don't see one person, correct me if I'm wrong, who is trying to be here to not have it at Fuller Field. If there is that much of a pushback on that side, I could see where you'd keep it as the status quo. But seeing that there are all these people, tears in their eyes, and really wanting it this bad, I think that really goes against what Falmouth has stood for for the past, God knows how many years. I've gone to Falmouth Public Schools since kindergarten, at Mrs. Cook, and the first thing we learned was treat others the way you'd want to be treated. And I could say right now, if you look, like, if you guys have kids, I don't know, if you, one of your kids died, would you want their last wish to be honored? Or would you want it to be tossed aside by some committee? Like, not to be derogatory or anything, but you guys have to think as people, not as just a board. I know there are rules, I know there, there's everything that you guys have to go through, but at the same time, there's nowhere in the handbook that says to have two stud athletes die in a car accident. That's just, that's not going to be in the handbook, that's not going to be anywhere. That's no principle, that's just, that's reality, and you have to make changes based on reality. To go off of that, another thing, just based on Falmouth, the Falmouth saying is no guff, and that has never been applicable to me at all. I know it's doing the right thing, I know it's doing all that stuff, but what it really is, is no bullying. And the way I look at it, this is corporate bullying, it's people sitting in high chairs, just looking down on kids who are just trying to speak their opinion. I think it's, like, just honestly embarrassing for the town to have people not be, like, for the kids not to be, their wishes to be granted. I saw, like, I've looked at Owen's tweet a bunch of times, saying, I think it was one of his last tweets, saying that he wanted it to be on Fuller Field. And you said, "For all those kids who didn't want to walk on Fuller Field, because they have no ties to it." I personally didn't play football or baseball at Fuller Field, I would love to graduate there. During my graduation, we had, in the gym, it was hot, it was stuffy, we really didn't want to be there. We were celebrating actually leaving the high school, not staying in there for one more day. So having it at Fuller Field, where all the community comes together, that would just be unreal. And you said that everyone wants to be a part of it, well, James and Owen can't be. And that is the part that we're trying to get across, is that I know in future, future years, you're going to have stuff that comes up like this, but you're never going to have two kids who just won a state championship, two best friends die in a car accident. So that's just, that's not something, check the record books, I could be wrong, I'm only 20 years old, but that just never happens. Lastly, oh, I was going to say, yeah, I have nothing prepared, I'm sorry, just came from work. Yeah, I don't know, Owen and James, oh, yeah, they were the faces of Falmouth, quote, like, maybe not, maybe they were, in my eyes, they were the face of that grade. I'm just a washed-up college kid now, I just, like, people, these kids are in high school, they want to do their thing. And the fact that James and Owen would be the two kids leading their team, leading their team out, leading their class out, and having it on Fuller Field would just be in memory of them, and for everyone, it would be everyone coming together, everyone would get to graduate, except for them, it doesn't matter where it is. So, I got to get back to work, so.
Mr. Calpares.
Thank you. I prefer to stand, but it's up to everybody. I've been sitting down too long. As a way of introduction, my name is Jim Calpares. And I was a teacher and administrator for almost 40 years at the high school. As an administrator, my main aim was to be in charge of student activities. And I got to say the same thing as some of the members of the committee here, I've said that I couldn't be more proud of you people for doing what you're doing. Really. But the bottom line is this, and this has to be said, as an administrator, these boys were reckless. These boys actually broke the law. Now, you people have memorialized these two boys over and over again. The Bruins have done it, the Patriots have done it. You've had moments of silence in many of the athletic events, and there's nothing worse.
Excuse me, but it's not necessary to badmouth two kids that are no longer here.
Excuse me, excuse me. The law is the law, and it's been said.
I know, but.
Excuse me, please. You don't help the floor. It had to be said.
Please.
It had to be said. These kids broke, were reckless. Let's leave it at that. And it's still going on. I've been told it's still going on. So that has to be done, one way or the other. Now, what I would like to say to you, simply that as far as going down a guff Fuller Field, I was in charge of over 30 graduations. And those 30 gra, out of those 30, we had one, at least I can remember, I had one down there, and it was a nightmare. I don't want to go into all the, you know, the graduation is for the kids, but it's also for the parents, for the grandparents, for the little kids that are going to be coming in. When we had it down there, the TA system didn't work well, the bleachers were terrible, there's a lot of improvements down there now. But quite frankly, quite frankly, we have now a beautiful new high school, the field house is air-conditioned, and it's a place to have the graduation. And I'm hoping for any questions by anybody.
There's not going to be any questions.
Can everyone just take a breath?
In the last school committee meeting, a number of students came, they made a great presentation, they were very respectful. I think that you see the school committee, the administration is sitting here, everybody's being very respectful. So everyone just take a breath. Who would like to speak next? Ma'am.
My name is Amy Clark. All right, I'll try to keep mine pragmatic. I'm a parent of a graduating senior, National Honor Society senior, Jacob Hartsler, I heard from him two weeks ago. I am also an educator in the community, and included four years teaching at Falmouth High School. And that was during the construction. And all of those years, we had graduation at guff Fuller Field. And contrary to your experience, it was fantastic. I remember part of the teachers, we formed a sort of ring around the students, we had one year where it rained, and we postponed it to another day. But as far as the whack job, or whatever roadblocks you want to put up, you've already set the precedent. In extraordinary years, Falmouth has had the high school graduation at guff Fuller. This is an extraordinary year. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. But I'd just like to say. It's not even a date.
No, Mr. Calpares. Ma'am.
Hi, my name is Therese Marshall. I have a senior graduating this year, and I did not prepare something to read or state, so I'm going to do the best. I did jot down a few notes. For the record, I'd like to say that I thought the last statements of gentlemen about the two boys was disgraceful, and frankly, should have been stopped, number one. I thank Laura Moynihan for putting this on the agenda, and for her analysis and explanation of the law. I thought it was extremely thorough. I too, I'm not a lawyer, I hadn't looked so far into the, the charters or the, or the manuals of the law, but I had looked at the school committee's website, and in their mission statement right there, I saw precedent for the school committee taking this on. I think that if we, if we came here tonight to ask the school committee to make this decision, then you've already voted by the comments that you made earlier. So with, with that in mind, I'd like to just clear up a couple of points that were made here tonight, or at least express some contrary opinions. One of the school committee members talked about the word dismissed, and felt that the children and the students were not dismissed. I can say that I have watched these kids, I have been amazed at what they have learned in their actions, in, in their research. I can tell you that I have seen them through the various stages, coming back from the rec department, from the town hall, from the police department, who I have to say was very, very supportive, supportive of them, from other town community leaders and members. Every time they came back, they were engaged, they felt valued, they felt respected, and they felt empowered. They did not feel that way at school or with the administration, and they were dismissed. There was not a group meeting until the very end, after decisions have already been made. There wasn't an open exchange with everyone, with the school committee, I mean, with the superintendent, and with, with the, with the principal. It was a select few. And that starts rumors, because little snippets of some of those conversations that happened in small groups did, did come out. And I, I'm not even going to repeat them, because some, some of the comments that were made to the students in a small group, I would leave it to those students to write a letter or to ear those and say them, because I don't want to repeat them in case they actually aren't true. Because when you have a small group like that, and you say quick things for why you can't do this to a small group of students, then they go out and tell the next kid, they go out and tell the next kid, and they go out. And by the time it got home to me, it was egregious. The comments were egregious, they were not fair. So I would ask that maybe those students who were in those small groups, who felt that they weren't heard, or that they were disrespected, that, that they might want to put that in writing, probably after graduation, that at least, at least it will be out there. In contrast to what I saw with the kids in their, in their, in their education of, of all these issues, I will say that last fall, I also saw these kids putting makeup on, making posters, creating themes for every single football game. I have never seen such engagement. I can remember leaving town the day that the game was going to be in Gillette Stadium, and I was on 28 going north, and all the buses went by, with all the kids and all the students. I couldn't have been happier for these students, couldn't have been prouder for the town or for the school. And I don't like football. So it, it, it was an engaging time. The second two-thirds of their senior year were not, that is where they were happiest. They have not been trying to make this as a memorial. The wish in a day of excitement after a championship that said, "Hey, let's have graduation on Governor, Governor Fuller Field," was not, was not for one person, it was, "Let's remember this, let's remember these days, let's remember this celebration." Little did they know that they weren't going to have anything like that after December. And they didn't. So I totally understand and support their reason to, to want this on Fuller Field. So I'm concerned about the, about the, the statement saying that they weren't dismissed. The other thing I'm concerned about with the school, with the school committee tonight is the selective letter reading. We all have letters that we could read. We all have letters that we could read. I thought that unless you get to read all of them, and read some that were supportive of what the students wanted, I think that was a little bit unfair. I can say that my child wrote a very heartfelt letter, email to the superintendent, well over a month ago, explaining all the reasons. Has never gotten a response. That's being dismissed. Not even a thank you. Indirectly, from someone else, she was told that the superintendent doesn't like emails. Again, I don't know if that's true.
I'd like to speak to that.
Did you...
Amy Marshall is your daughter?
Yes.
Yeah, I met with the... There were four or five girls that sent me emails, and it wasn't that I didn't like email, but I felt like I needed to go and meet with them face-to-face to take on all of their emotional stuff. And I met with every one of those girls together. And they told me exactly how they felt. I wasn't gonna do that over email. I thought I needed to meet with them face-to-face.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I thought they deserved that.
I appreciate that. That isn't the way I understood it. And I have to say, I don't know how long a time... Maybe there's a disagreement there, I don't know. But because I kept asking my daughter, I kept asking, have you gotten a response?
Ask Mrs. Gans, who was involved in those email exchanges, and we specifically said, we need to meet with these girls.
I didn't want to do it over email.
So, excuse me, so again, I'm gonna ask. People get an opportunity to speak. I don't want this to be, as I said, interrogation. Everybody, you respectful, you get your opportunity.
So like I said, the school committee has said, even if you were to decide that this was in your venue, every school committee member who spoke tonight has said that they would support superintendent's decision, the decision is not to move the venue. The reasons that you have given, I object to. I object to describing, to not understanding how the kids felt dismissed. They felt dismissed. I object to the reading of that letter and not reading other letters. I object to a reticent to have it on a field, because someone might open fire at them. That can happen inside a school too, and I just think that that was shameful. I think that we have all said that we want this to be a graduation for all students, but we are not listening to the majority of students. Yes, I'm sure, there are some students that may not want it, but I don't think it's a majority. And I don't think anyone's taken the time to find out if it's a majority. There might be a reason why we're not asking if there is a majority. And I also want to say that back before the April meeting, I spoke with the Riverside Trauma Center, I'm not exactly sure what their proper name is, and spoke with someone there for well over half an hour. I did not hear cooperation at all from them with the bullet point statements that have been made by the administration as to why Riverside supports keeping it there. I did not hear that at all. I was told that they would never tell anyone where to have the graduation, what to do or what not to do. And when they were given the... When they were presented with the idea of changing the venue of graduation, the Riverside person I spoke to told me that when we were told that, we were told, some of the kids want to change it to Governor Fuller Field, but we can't do it because it costs too much money, and there's no handicap access, and we can't do this, and we can't do that. So it's really not a done thing. So they said, yeah, okay, fine, that makes sense. That was their description of what happened. So I think that there's a lot of information that has not been fairly stated. And I was so proud of all the students in April. I was disappointed that there was a last word, without any rebuttal, although I do understand the procedure. And I really am disappointed in the comments that were made by the school committee tonight, and your reasons for not taking this on. And if you decided to have a vote, I was disappointed in every one of your reasons for not supporting all these students. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy Marshall. And so I just, I have a couple things to say. But I just wanted to clear up one thing. So Ms. Taylor, you're saying that you never said to us in that meeting that you dislike email, because I strongly remember you saying that.
What I said was, I didn't think that I should respond in email because of the emotional piece.
You're allowing a back-and-forth again? And I've asked a couple of times, it did not happen.
I'm sorry.
But I'm not... Are you the chair? Yes, and I allowed you to interrupt me also. So, okay? So I'm gonna gavel here, because I don't like using this gavel, all right? So I'm gonna ask one more time. Thank you.
So as previously said, I have a couple things that I'm gonna try and say here. Basically, I honestly forget who brought it up, but someone said that they think that the superintendent and our principal have a very good rhythm as to what our student body wants and feels. And so personally, I think that the students, and the students that stand with me today, have the best knowledge of the rhythm of that class. Ms. Taylor and Ms. Gans felt that there was a strong amount of people that did not want graduation at Fuller Field. And we made a petition, and we went around to everyone. We said, you do not have to sign this. If you want graduation on Fuller Field, then please sign it. If not, that's okay. We did everything we could to try and get the support, and we got it. And so we just didn't see where Ms. Taylor and Ms. Gans were coming from. And so we asked if we could have an anonymous petition online, which would only take a day, and they dismissed that. And so since they said that they got the emails from people saying that they didn't want graduation on Fuller Field, I brought up the law of public records. And because all emails that are sent to Ms. Gans and received by her should be public information, so we were hoping to get the emails with all the names redacted, because obviously, we don't want to embarrass our classmates, like, they want it to be private, we get that. We just didn't understand the numbers, and we were told that they were not going to do that. So that's something that we don't understand, and I personally think that we have the best understanding of the majority of the class that wants graduation on Fuller Field. We really do want this. We've worked really, really hard for it. You all say that you admire us greatly, and in my mind, what that reminds me of is maybe getting an A on a paper. Because in school, great, like homework, what you do in school, sometimes it just doesn't make any sense, and you sit at home doing your homework, and you think, what's the point of me doing this? And then you get an A, but it's just for the A. And then we come here, and we give this whole presentation, and we think that all of the argumentative essays and persuasive essays that we've written over the years, and all the books that we've learned about societies, and this is where it's gonna pay off. And this is where we're gonna get our chance to prove what you guys put us through, the twelve years of academic achievement that we're gonna be celebrating. And this is where we're gonna see why we needed to do it. And now, we're still being told no. And the comments that were made by a gentleman before me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, maybe I shouldn't say that, because you don't want to be a back-and-forth, but they were really rude and disrespectful to some of the greatest people that I've ever known. And those aren't the first comments that we've heard, that were disrespectful to our cause. In school, we've heard teachers saying that what we believed in, we should just give up in, and that it wasn't worth it. We were told that when we talked Riverside, and they said that a conversation between them and the students was vital, we brought that up to Mrs. Taylor and Ms. Gans, and they said that pursuing that conversation would be worthless. And as my mom brought up, there have been a lot of insensitive comments that honestly made me want to quit, because I couldn't handle hearing them anymore, about people that were beautiful and brought so much light into our lives. But we're here, and I'm here for my class, because we are celebrating eleven years and a couple months of a great school system. And then quite a few really terrible months that I honestly think are probably gonna be the worst in some of our lives. And we just want to bring it back to first quarter, and we want to end it on our good note. We don't want to hold graduation in the place that we daily mourn. We want to celebrate it in our beautiful town, outside, in beautiful sunny Cape Cod, where we had our good moments and our good memories. And I understand that you guys probably aren't even gonna vote tonight, and that many of you already side with Ms. Taylor. But I ask you to see that you're sending us out into the world, and half the time we're being told that we're adults, and we have to stand up for ourselves, and in times like this, when we're being told that the decision has to be taken away from us because we're children. And there's been so much disconnect, and there has been a shutdown and disrespect. And I don't want to go into the details of that, because I still have to graduate. And now I'm just kind of rambling. So I think I've gotten my point across. We just want to celebrate our years at Falmouth High School that are really ending on a terrible, terrible time in our lives, in one of the places that we have our happiest memories. And if anything, I would ask you to allow us to pull our class anonymously, because we believe that we have the majority. And I don't think anyone understands the majority of a student body better than the student body. Thank you.
Thank you all for standing up and sitting in this terrible heat in this room. My name is Amy Loth Rosum, and I am a grief and bereavement specialist with a private practice in East Falmouth. I've been a hospice chaplain, I was the program director for Ally's Place in Ann Arbor, Michigan, and also one of the primary bereavement specialists for the Kids Grieve Two Program at Hospice and Palliative Care of Cape Cod, and then Old Health. I just wanted to come on behalf of myself and some of the other therapists in Falmouth that have worked closely with the students and the families, and express my professional opinion, just to lay the re-traumatization to rest, that in my extensive experience working in this field, and I'm also a published author in this field, and I teach at Leslie University, that moving it to Fuller Field would not be re-traumatizing to the students. The students are saying very clearly that it would... Excuse me, it would be a... I'm getting overheated. It would be a celebration for them, that graduating outside is life-giving for them. And I have heard them say, in town, and I see several of them, that their interest is not in having a commemoration. The high school did a wonderful job supporting the kids after the accident. I was just really moved about how the high school came together, and the town came together to embrace the class, and all the students of the high school when this terrible tragedy happened. But I just, and I had written a letter to the school committee, so I know it has come up several times, and I am not disagreeing with my colleague at the Riverside Trauma Center, but simply putting in my opinion, my professional opinion, that it would not be re-traumatizing. So if we could take that issue off the table, I would do want to sign my name on that, put my professional signature on that. Thank you very much.
So I have this long, nice, floral-ish statement that I wanted to say, but... And I'm gonna probably cry, but that's just gonna happen, and...
Could you...
What? Oh, I'm Casey Wacken. And I am a straight A's student, and I have broken the law, and I have been reckless, and that does not mean that I deserve to not be glorified at all. Anyways, I don't really think that I could have put it in better words than Amy did, other than the fact that I'm here to speak on behalf of the majority of my class, and you guys clearly have made your points, even though I disagree with them, I do not believe that you guys are going to change your minds. And Mr. Jacobs mentioned that about how laws are made, and maybe there will be a law in ten years that says that a school committee can override a superintendent. And I would just like to disagree with kind of the school committee on their reasons why we should not be allowed to graduate there, because, one, we figured out ways to make it handicap accessible by talking to the police department and the fire department, and it is so easy to do. You just go through the back way, and then we can put a ramp if it's a really big deal. And then parking, parking is not an issue, because we contacted the ferry, not the steamship authority, but yeah, the Island Queen, and they said, they offered us the use of their parking lot, which is not even .1 miles away from the rec department. So just to clarify, those are not issues in any way. And then I would also like to point out that, yes, I fully believe that you guys are not lying to us when you say that there are students that have, students and families and communities that have reached out to you guys, saying that they don't want our senior class to graduate on Fuller Field. But I guess I ask the question, why are their voices heard louder than 160 students? Personally, that makes no sense to me, and I totally get that you guys want to protect everyone, but it's graduation, and pretty much everyone cries because it's graduation. And another thing that I think has been lost in transmission is that everyone seems to think that we want a memorial, or that graduating on Fuller Field is some type of commemoration, but it's not in any way. It is a celebration of all of us. Yes, it was Owen's last wish. Yes, that might have pushed us further to pursue this, but that is not the profound reason. We want to do it for us, the people that are still here, because we deserve the opportunity to be a place where the only memories are positive and uplifting and enjoyable. And that's kind of all I have to say. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Olivia McKnight. I was present at the meeting on April 25th with the students that presented. I just wanted to speak to the school committee tonight on miscommunication, because I strongly feel that there was no communication between the entire student body, the administrators, and the counselors, who did end up counseling the administration on this issue. The whole student body never met, not once, with Riverside. They never sat us down as a whole and said, how are you feeling? What would be best for you? And as a student who has had mental health issues, who has dealt with psychiatrists, with psychologists, with individuals who are involved in the mental health profession, the first question I always get asked, what is in your best interest, Olivia? Not what my best interest is as a therapist, as your therapist, but what is in your best interest for your mental health? And that is an issue that the school system needs to deal with separately, because frankly, that is something that the Falmouth Public School System is lacking in, their ability to deal with their students' mental health and their education on mental health. But what I'm talking to you about today is the lack of communication with these students. We can see here, from comments that have been made, from emotions being expressed, that there's clearly something wrong with how we're dealing with this, and I think we can all recognize that. From the beginning, we have obviously made mistakes, and I feel like it takes a strong person to say that we, that there were mistakes made. And I feel as though, from a student perspective, and as one of... and as one of the kids who has done extensive research into this issue, I know it's possible, and I know we have the majority, and I know that this is in our best interest for our mental well-being. And yeah, we did lose two of our best friends, and well, a lot of our friends and/or people that we've grown up with, and that was awful, okay? And I'm not gonna address anyone, but yes, we do know how they passed away, thank you. But we also know how we feel about that, and we know how that hurts us every day. And we know what is gonna help us in healing with that. And that's graduating at Fuller Field, the place where we hold our happiest memories. Not the place where sometimes I feel so overwhelmed and stressed, I have to go to the bathroom to cry. Not the place where I saw my best friend come to me and saying that she was feeling like she wanted to die. Not the place where I give, I've given hours of homework and time and just time and hours to get an A and stressing over little things, no. No, I don't want to graduate in the smelly gym. I don't want to do that. I want to graduate outside where I have my football games. And I am a student who is involved in the music program, in sports, in volunteer activities. And I can tell you that Fuller Field touches the lives of all students, not just the jocks, which honestly, I believe our grade is very close and we don't really have those social groups, but anyways. It touches the lives of all color guard. We have dancers, we have the kids from the band who frankly love performing at Fuller Field. They're really into that. We have the football boys who were undefeated this year, 13-0. Yeah, they're standing over here. We have me, who's not involved in any of those, but just goes and watches because I love seeing my class stand up and get out there and dress up and have fun. It touches the lives of everyone, including my grandma. My grandma goes to the football games. She loves that stuff. My uncle, I know old men who stand on the sidelines because they love watching the games. Like, it touches the lives of everyone. So to say that it's not, that's not, okay? I disagree with that. And to say that this isn't in the best interests of the students, I don't agree with that either. And to say that there was some form of communication, there wasn't. We wouldn't be here if there was. We wouldn't be here if we felt like we were heard. We wouldn't be here if we felt like this was right. It's not right. And I don't, I know you're the council, and I know that as administrators, this and that, I know that. I'm aware of that. But at the end of the day, I think it's about morals, and this isn't morally right.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ed Finn. I'm a resident of the community. And I want to speak in support of the decision of Nancy Taylor and Mary Gans regarding graduation. First, however, I want to speak about the class of 2017. How did you ever acquire the skills you have shown in presenting and pursuing your request? You have written beautifully, spoken eloquently and passionately, and demonstrated respect, sensitivity, and compassion. In a world where anger and snarky remarks pass for public discourse, you, your families, teachers, and this community can be so proud of who you are. I also want to speak of Nancy and Mary and the process they followed to reach a conclusion. As has been noted tonight, they both are devoted and introspective educators. Facing this issue, they studied its many layers, they called in many resources. They listened, they talked, they found quiet time to reflect, and they listened again. They pondered about who they are not hearing and what that can mean. They constantly thought about students, all and each. And they thought about families and students, and the community and students, and the classes that have gone before and today's students, and they tried to see tomorrow and those students. I admire that comprehensive process. And at a point, they made a decision, a decision made after numerous discussions, objective and exhaustive review, and after significant feedback about trauma from the community. They pointed to graduation as an important, venerable, long-held tradition, a rite of passage all across America. I support that. I support the notion that this ritual unites this community with each and every student and all their personal achievements. It links this class with the class of 2016 and 2015, and classes back over a century. It brings together those who graduated a generation and even two generations ago. It asks us all to come and celebrate in one of the most venerable institutions in Falmouth, all that this class is, all they have become, and encourage them forward to what they will be. I support the notion that when this class enters the fieldhouse, as the band starts up pomp and circumstance, throats will thicken and emotions will flood as they have for all those classes before and will for years to come. And I hope as it gets towards the end, the band will play it again and even louder, and our hearts and hands will come together in support of each one of us and especially each one of the great class of 2017.
Thank you.
I'm gonna let everybody else speak. Sir?
Thank you, sir. My name is John D'Amello. I have to tell you that for nine years, I sat where you're all sitting. It's still a very hot room. You have more comfortable chairs than Dr. Antonucci allowed us. But anyway, you still have a hard job, and we all appreciate the time you've put in. When I read that you were going to have this meeting tonight, I was quite surprised. I was pleased. But I came here thinking that there was a chance that you might change your mind. But to me, it sounds like you've already voted. When I can count four or five who have said they aren't gonna change their vote, then I think that all of us who are speaking are really wasting our time and your time. And I don't like to see that. When I was on the school committee, under Dr. Antonucci, we had a very good relationship. And I don't like going against Ms. Taylor because I think she's done a fantastic job up to this point. I do want to publicly say that I disagree with all of you who feel that the students shouldn't have their say. I'm glad to hear that they don't want it as a memorial. They want it as a time of celebration, and that's the way it should be. And that's all I want to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Josephine Brennan, and I was not at the meeting in April. I am not someone who you've seen before you about this issue. I've not emailed you about this issue, quite frankly, because I felt like I would be overstepping. I support my class and I support what we want to do because quite frankly, we don't need to be connected with other classes through graduating in the fieldhouse, and we are our own class. We're the class of 2017. We're the class that for the first time saw a championship at our school from that football field. Now, I'm not someone that you would have found at the football field most Friday nights. I do volunteer work on Fridays, and I would be found doing my homework because I'm that kind of student. But this year, I went to a football game for homecoming, and I've never really done that before because my class had developed this community around our football games. We had themed football games. We went there to be together and to have a good time. And that's what I remember about Fuller Field. And that's what I want to come away remembering about Fuller Field. Not that we were denied our graduation there. That would be a tragedy because to me, what stands in my memory is being on that football field and watching the marching band, watching the color guard, watching all of my friends because I'm a band student. I don't play in the marching band, but I go to support my friends. And watching the football team and seeing their victories. I think that it would be a disgrace to not listen to the students because when I heard that this meeting was happening, I made sure, I came here from my tutoring session on Tuesday night to make sure that I was here because I had hope that someone would listen. And I have not been involved in meetings. I wasn't given that opportunity because I'm not someone who has voiced my opinion on this yet because I felt like I would be overstepping. And tonight, I felt like I needed to voice my opinion because you say that you want this graduation to be for all and that some people have no ties to Fuller Field. And I think that you're wrong because I would be one of those students that you would say doesn't have a tie to Fuller Field. And I do, and it's profound. And I hope that what you've gathered tonight from listening to all of my classmates who have been here, who have talked to you, who have sent you emails, is that they are representative of the majority because I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for them and them telling me that I should be here. I mean, the students in my class, they deserve to be heard. And there are a lot more students like me that aren't here because they also feel like they would be overstepping, and I think that's what you're missing, is that there is a majority. And that these students that you see here, they're not the only ones that want this. You may be thinking that because they're the ones that have voices and that are courageous enough to stand before you. So I hope that you have all listened to what they have to say. And I still want to remain hopeful. It has been very discouraging hearing everyone's remarks because quite honestly, I don't think that you understand what we are throwing at you. And I think that I've always had respect. I've come and spoken before the school committee before, and I've respected our administration for a long time, but I really hope that you would listen. Thank you.
Excuse me, the gentleman in the back, are you taping this?
This is Cape Cod.
I'm sorry?
I'm her father.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dante Borjese. I'm a member of the senior class. And I prepared some stats here, but I first wanted to address a rumor that was brought to our attention by Ms. Upton regarding the senior semi, saying that it was taken away from the students. And I'm a class officer, and I just kind of wanted to put that rumor in arrest because there were a lot of complications that went into senior semi, including a snow day that prevented a lot of students from being able to buy their tickets. And I don't think that the administration should be held accountable for that. I think that was a miscommunication I wanted to address. Aside from that, last time I was here, I discussed a little bit about the financial piece of Fuller Field, and I have kind of some updates on that that I thought you might want to hear. I've been in contact with a man named Robert Velosevich, who used to be on the planning board for the town of Falmouth, and he was also a town meeting member for a while. He currently is in charge of event planning and production for all Fenway Park concerts, and he was on the national advance staff for the Bernie Sanders campaign. So he's dealt with events that are, we're talking like 30,000 people. So I thought he was a qualified individual to give me some advice on this. And he's been more than willing to help me. He checked all of the information as far as our budget and our costs that we had a few miscommunications with the administration about. They brought about a separate sheet of expenses. Anyways, what I'm trying to say is, after running it by him, he told me we included everything that we needed, and he actually thought we could have saved some money on a few things, and he thought he had some connections that could help us get things donated or at least prices reduced. I wish I'd a copy of this to hand out to all of you, but just real quick, he told me that as far as acquiring up to 3,000 chairs, if we cannot get enough from the Cape Cod rental company, he has connections that can get them to us for free or at a very reduced cost right now. Our cost is $5,400, and he said that he can provide those for us and the transportation of those for just a fraction of that, as well as, yeah, as well as the transportation for those. Another thing, we proposed purchasing an armored deck portable turf floor so as to not damage the grass on Fuller Field. Because obviously, that's something we care about a lot. We didn't want to disrupt that. I'm sure I speak for both the football and baseball kids in saying that. And he told me that having a stage and chairs and that type of, that type of style event on the grass for less than 72 hours shouldn't damage the field at all. But if we feel the need to do that, he proposed that we use a terraplace flooring, which is what they use at the Fenway Park concerts. That kind of keeps anything from getting damaged. And he offered to provide that for us at, once again, a reduced cost. The original cost for the portable turf floor was just short of $2,000, and he told me that he can provide that for us for much less. Also, we projected $4,000 as far as sound system goes. I've been at graduations in the past. I know a lot of the time, a lot of the time, people can't hear and such, so I talked to him about that, and that's an issue. He told me that he can bring that cost down to almost 50%, which would be $2,000. And that brings our original estimate of $19,611 down a few thousand dollars. So I think that with the money that we've raised through our class, especially this year with all the support we've got, and I think that this is possible. And I hope that you would reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jacob Hartzler. And well, since I'm a best friend of both those two reckless kids, I thought I should talk a little bit about recklessness. To me, being reckless is bringing in somebody to tell a bunch of kids that their friends deserve to die. It's a bit reckless to me. To me, being reckless is being proven that something can happen and still not accepting that it can happen because before you were proven wrong, you made the decision, and you don't want to go back on your word. That's reckless. To me, reckless is being, is saying that you are in sync with the senior class when the majority disagrees with you. I just can't understand that. If the majority of our students want this, then it should happen because we've proven that it can happen. And if you don't believe that the majority want this, then put it to a vote. Simple as that. Thank you.
Behind you, no, this morning, behind you.
So my name is Philip Fonso. As you probably know, I don't have a senior in this class. I didn't intend on being here tonight. Some of the things that were said sparked me to come down. I was running for school committee, and I got out. You guys are amazing. So some of you guys have gotten ahold of me to help kind of get this ball rolling a little bit. And after I read what was on Facebook put out by Mrs. Taylor, I thought the initiative was over, so I kind of, you guys are doing your thing, I backed it up. I think what upset me enough to get here tonight is every one of you have put your signs in yards... signs in yards like theirs. And yet, because you're an administrator or a former administrator, you side with administration. And I'm not expecting you to flat out say you're in fear of retaliation of some sort or you don't want to be part of the go along to get along club. We're at town meeting. Some of you are town meeting members. We vote with the majority. These are not elementary students. They're going into real world in the matter of months. Some have cars and bills and real life struggles already. And every one of you that have spoken tonight against the students, I'm sorry, should be ashamed. And that's my own personal view and take. This is where the voting public needs to know that a school committee is not to be your private union. I think when you have a school committee that's comprised of so many either teachers or volunteers and VIPs and everything else, you sort of hold that water right above their head waiting to dump over if something doesn't go right. Every single one of you, your excuse ended with administration or teacher or former. And Walter, for you to say that the recreation center is not handicapped, you're on the recreation committee. We have football games. Every single rec program is handicapped for every single child to a grown adult. You know that. That should have been one iota of a thought. Parking, that's a joke. Anybody ever been to a Friday night football game? So in closing, two things. I'm rescinding my offer to not run. If anybody wants to vote for somebody who's not school administration, vote for me and the three other candidates that aren't incumbent this year. And sir, I'd like to show you, this is the tweet of the boy who was in the passenger seat that died that night. He was not the driver. He was not driving reckless. And you need to have respect when you make comments the way you do. You're why I'm here tonight.
Guys, you gotta cut that out.
No, you made administration point earlier.
Okay. That's enough.
Oh, that's enough.
Yeah, it is.
That is enough.
If we vote for you, we're in trouble.
Oh, we sure are. You're right.
All right. Honest to God.
Excuse me, please. Sometimes I wish adults could learn from kids. Would anybody else like to speak?
I've learned as the superintendent that I don't second guess the superintendent, so I'm not here to do that. Just trying to put some closure to this thing. This last outburst is not necessary. Not one of these students acted that way tonight. And we listened to them, I think that is good. But I did want to point a couple points out, clarification. I was the one that wrote the Ed Reform Law of 1993 outlining the duties of school committees and superintendents. So if you're gonna blame anybody about that law, blame me because I did it. And you're right, in terms of responsibilities, the law was passed to delineate the responsibility of school committees to policymaking groups and to give the superintendent and principals the authority to run it. So in that case, you're doing the right thing. Whether you agree or disagree with her, that process has been followed. Secondly, I think is Chair Elling did a wonderful job tonight. This is a very emotional night. I had a brother who was 19 years, Stockwater back at Leamester High School, was killed at 19 years of age. I know what the families are going through. We'll never forget that. We won't forget it at graduation. But I think, I hope we leave here tonight respecting each other for our difference of opinion and let's see what happens. Nancy, I think you're doing a great job as superintendent, even though you're an administrator. That's okay. And I think the whole school committee is doing it. We as a town have come together. So let's leave here tonight, be a little more rational. Let's try to support students where we can. Let's make graduation a celebration that it should be, no matter where it is, because you're gonna look back on this as an event that means a lot to you and your family. So thanks for giving us the opportunity tonight. And though we have differences of opinion, doesn't mean we have to criticize each other. And I don't want to have a circle where we hold hands, but we should. Have a good night. Thanks.
School committee will get an opportunity.
Edward Dunn, Chief of Police. First, I'd like to let everybody know and commend Nancy Taylor for her leadership, her support and compassion. And I mean, I've worked with her throughout her career, my career here in the police department. But in December, when I made that phone call, she picked up the phone, she came out to the scene, was out there at the scene with me well into the early morning. And then her leadership along with Mary Gans for the weeks to follow, it was extremely tragic time. And we all have to make tough decisions. In my job, I have to make tough decisions for the whole Falmouth community. And most of them aren't popular, but that's what I get paid to do. I know we've had many conversations and this was not an easy decision for Nancy. She looked at all the facts, she looked at all the students, and she made her decision. And it's a tough decision to make. And as has been said here tonight, it's not always gonna be a popular decision, it's not always gonna be a great decision with everybody else. As far as the police department, a lot of people are talking about the police department. The young group that came in, I didn't have the opportunity to speak with them, but Captain Smith did and commended them for coming in and doing what they were doing. And they did get some facts. When graduation was held at Fuller Field, and my daughter graduated from Fuller Field because she was part of that four-year construction up at the high school. So I was, I was a sergeant back then and I was in charge of the graduation on Fuller Field. Everybody thinks it's, it's easy to do. I'm just gonna give you some logistics. I looked at, and thankfully we saved it, we didn't throw any of it away. We have the plans from back in 2007, eight, nine, whenever it was held there. And I looked at those numbers. Back then, we had 14 officers and a supervisor to run the graduation. I looked at the whole plan and a lot of it, we had barricades that were set out to block roads and things like that. I wouldn't allow that today, which is why I gave Nancy the numbers. It would be somewhere between 25, 22 and 25 police officers I would request to run the graduation on Fuller Field if I can get them. I would also close Dillingham Ave to vehicle traffic. And this is for safety. It's similar to what we do with a road race, it's similar to what we do with a street fair. We live in a different time. And I don't want anything tragic to happen on my watch and I wouldn't allow it. Parking, people said parking is easy. I commend them for going to the Island Queen. Absolutely, Island Queen parking lot can take some cars. But parking during those graduations, when it was held there, it was a logistical nightmare. Could we do better? Yeah, we can always do better and we learn from our mistakes and things like that. I know when it's graduation at the high school, the high school fills up and then Blacksmith Shop Road and Gifted Street fill up, which become a logistical nightmare up there. And that's the high school when there's plenty of parking at the high school. And you have the overflow out there. So, but I just want to commend Nancy for all her leadership during this crisis. And I think she did an outstanding job and she has to make those tough decisions. Thank you.
Anybody who hasn't spoken like to speak?
I'm Gene Masquez. I'm also a member of the class of 2017. And I didn't really intend on speaking tonight, but after hearing like my former classmates, I felt like I needed to. I'm a student athlete. I play football, so I know what it was like to be on that field when the whole community was there. And not only did the loss of two of my friends and former teammates bring us all together, but the field in general brought the whole community of Falmouth together. Not because we're just playing and we're, we were winning, obviously, but because it's a time where we can all be filled with excitement and joy. And I feel like this school right now, after the loss of them, is a place where we kind of mourn every day. And me personally, I've been through a lot and my friends are always here for me, but for the whole class, I feel like we have been there for each other. And definitely Fuller Field has been a place where we've been able to get over all of the sadness. And it's a place where I feel if we do graduate, and I'm not saying you guys will change your minds, but I feel like if we do have the chance to go there, it's a place where we will be filled with excitement again. Because it's a place where we've had so much success as a class and as a community. And I also wanted to thank everyone here for their time with all of this because it is emotional and very like painful. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
And I sent emails and I was in the meeting, like one of the select few that was in the meeting. And personally, I felt that even in the meeting, that there are already a lot of decisions made. And even with what Mr. DeMello said, I don't understand why we'd have this meeting if there's no voting. I don't know if there is, but I just feel like personally, it's more traumatizing to just keep bringing up this issue if there's no changing it, if what we're saying right now makes no difference. It hurts us even more because there's things that continue to be said that hurt us more. And just the fact that we're putting all this work in and we keep finding more and more things that make it so we believe that it can happen and it doesn't matter, it just makes it so much harder for all of us. And I just think that if traumatizing was one of the main issues, this meeting shouldn't be happening because it's hurting us even more to just keep giving us false hope that it can happen. And it's just, I don't think that's right. And I just believe that if we keep trying this hard, it's clearly for a reason. And if the majority of the people feel this way, then it's just, we should, we shouldn't let little obstacles get in our way.
The answer to your question is, the reason why it's on the agenda is because of this question. Ms. Monahan requested the young agenda, which is why.
Well, why don't you be voting or...
Were you there at the beginning of the meeting?
Yes.
If there is a motion, it will be a motion. So far, there has not been a motion on the floor.
Can I make a motion?
No. Would anybody else like to speak that has this spoken? Ms. Monahan, you had your hand up before, would you like to say anything?
Thank you. Just to recap, I, I too agree that the process that came about tonight was sort of characteristics of this entire process. The committee voiced their comments and voiced essentially to the room what your decision was before you took almost two hours of public comment. To me, that's wrong. That's, that's coming to a meeting and saying, I've already made up my mind, but I'll sit here and listen to you anyway because I have to. I hope that some of the things that you've heard tonight will change those opinions because that's why I asked for this to be on the agenda. Because I felt very strongly that this is a democracy that we live in, that you need to hear from the people who are passionate about this, about how they feel before you decide. And I'm disappointed, and I hope very strongly, that what you have heard over the past two hours will change those opinions. We've heard that, and I'll summarize what I think are all of the concerns that went into your comments against this decision. Parking, the students have addressed parking, they have somebody volunteering a parking lot. Safety was an issue. If Fuller Field is not safe, then perhaps football games shouldn't be held at Fuller Field. Safety can be an issue anywhere. The issue of, the appropriate number of police has been addressed. The other issue I heard, well, what happens next year? What do we do next year if the students come to us? Well, I say hallelujah if the students come to you next year. There should be a student survey every year. What do you think about graduation? Where would you like to graduate? Do it online, have the numbers before you, make the decision. That's what your manual says. Honor the student opinion. So that was another reason. The last reason I've heard is that operation versus policy. Nowhere have I heard tonight that the decision that's been made is, cannot be reviewed by this committee. The line between operation and policy is not clear. I think you all know that. I've read the advisory reports of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. I'm sure you've all read them as well. There's a gray area between operation and policy. The weight of public opinion and the students has to take priority when there's that, when there's no clear line. And there is not a clear line here. I'm disappointed also that when I challenged the opinion that was given by the legal counsel for the district, I was dismissed. A decision had already been made by him and he wasn't willing to listen to me anymore and basically excuse me like I was a child. And I was told that he wasn't going to waste his time anymore on me. I was not given the benefit of his additional comments on your operational protocol. Again, another decision having been made, but then people listening to me because they have to. What's wrong? The decision on this location was made by the administration and the students were then told of the decision. And yes, the administration with great respect, I know they work very hard and they're very, very capable, but the decision was made. We've heard that. We know it was made before the students were heard. And let's own that, okay? It's time to own that. And that's your job is to own it. The decision was made without the student input from all students or at least a majority of the students. And it's your job tonight as elected officials to own that. To say, hey, we recognize that that happened, we have great respect for our staff, for our superintendent. She's a wonderful person and does a great job, but let's own what happened here. Let's own it. Because that's our duty to these young people and to the parents and to the community. Every excuse that I've heard tonight has been countered. So let's not go with the excuses anymore. Let's own the decision and let's move forward from it. Give these students what they're requesting for this year. Next year, the whole thing should be up for review. There should be a clear policy stated on who makes this decision and the committee should vote it. But you don't have that right now. So nobody can say that you don't have the authority. If you don't have it, that clear policy statement, where's the line between policy and operation? How is this not an educational policy? We can argue all we want, but there's no clear area. So I'm asking you to recognize that and to own it and to recognize that by saying no or refusing to vote, you're not recognizing the will of the majority. And one school committee member said, well, we have to think about the people who don't want it at this location. But that's not the majority. You have to go with the majority. If you don't do that, then you're ignoring the majority of the students. You can't do that. How can you do that? And say, we're acting in everybody's best interest when you're going against what the majority have asked from you. So with that, I appreciate you taking all this time to do, to review this. Obviously, you care greatly about the community, we know that. These students, this is a very difficult thing. I've been doing this for 25 years to come and speak like this. For them to do this, it's amazing. It's amazing. It's so courageous for them to get up here and speak before you and pour their hearts out to you. And I just wish that they had had the opportunity to do that three months ago because we'd probably be in a very different place right now. And that was why I asked it to be put on this agenda. I think it's important that the school committee recognize that they do have a voice, that they should be polled, that they should be surveyed before a decision is made and told to them. So I'm asking you to own that, recognize that's not the way we should be doing business and reverse it. Thank you very much. So I'm asking you to own that, recognize that's not the way we should be doing business and reverse it. Thank you very much.
So as I said before, we're gonna open it up to anybody who wanted to speak. We've given everybody an opportunity to speak. Did you wanna speak?
Yes. It looks like I'm the last comment, so I just wanna say something to close it out. Um my name's Marissa Delano and I'm also a senior in the class of 2017. Standing over there tonight, I noticed a 1019 sticker on someone's laptop. Um that made me really happy. It showed that there was support in something that I took pain in. It showed that there is support in the community. It's not just a class issue about what everyone's going through. And I really hope that you put aside whatever's holding you back and that someone has the courage to make a motion, to do something for the students, to move graduation. Because it's not, sadly, we don't have that power. And I would really hope that one of you would make a motion. It would mean a lot to us and it would support us as you support us with that sticker. Thank you.
Anybody else wants to? As I've said before, after everyone has spoken, I wanted to bring it back to the school committee. See if the school committee had, um, for the statements. So I would disagree with you, Ms. Monahan. Everybody said what they were feeling. Now we come back. So Terry's hand up. Kelly's hand up. Melissa's hand up. Go ahead.
Well, one thing, first of all, I wanted to say, it breaks my heart that we would go out of here as Mr. Antonucci has said, Dr. Antonucci has said, at, at odds with each other. I mean, that's the reason this was on the agenda, was to um, you, you know, conversation never hurts, no matter how much you have and no matter what you're thinking. I think if you go in thinking you know what's in somebody else's head and what they feel, you lose from there. I just wish someone would a- answer something that I brought up as a means of a solution, maybe not. The end-all, be-all solution is that we have a history in this school system of honoring classmates who have passed away during their school years. It's a beautiful ceremony. It's outside of the graduation. It's held a couple of weeks before it. There is, there, there is a clergy person there. Uh, 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 maybe you all heard what I said about that. I mean, can we put, maybe if you don't like that suggestion, can we spend time, I mean, working on a community suggestion? Cause we're still at odds and it's just, it breaks my heart that. I mean, can somebody answer why they object to that um condition?
It isn't a memorial. It's graduation.
Alright, so, excuse me. You've run this meeting. You had your opportunity to speak. You had your opportunity to speak.
Okay, well, if, so that was my suggestion. That's all I can say.
I just wanted to speak to the process because something you said, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name. Um, I think was really valuable. Why are we having this conversation when it feels so re-traumatizing? And I think that there's real value in that, um, in that comment. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands our process, which is if someone makes a request to have something on our agenda, we really try to do that. So that everyone has the opportunity to see it posted and come to the meeting and know we're gonna talk about it. I also think it's important to recognize that until it's on an agenda, we don't have the opportunity to talk to each other. So I didn't know what Walter thought about this issue until he said what he said. And I didn't have the chance to talk to anybody. I talked to Ellen and I knew it was gonna be on the agenda. But we don't have the opportunity to have those conversations. The first time we did that was when you heard us do it. And that it does come, we listen and then we have the chance to do exactly what we're doing right here. So the last thing I wanna say is that I cannot even believe that I am like an old woman and my voice cracks trying to talk in these meetings. And all these kids can do it so seamlessly and it is just so awe-inspiring. And maybe someday I'll be as eloquent as the rest of you.
It's my laptop. I hear you. I hear all of you. My heart is broken with all of yours. I cried the night of the rack. I was on the road with my six-year, excuse me, my eight-year-old and my six-year-old is home. The night of the rack. I can't help but feel for you. I walked in your shoes. I walked those halls. I lost classmates with you. You think I don't think about that every time this conversation comes up? Because it does. And it's leaders like Dr. Antonucci that I followed and I listened to and I trusted and I still trust. That I have faith. I have faith that we're, although Riverside doesn't understand the unique town that we live in. And I am the first to say that we are so perspicacious and unique. And it's hard to be here. It's hard to come here and stay here and go away and come back. It is not easy. And it's okay in the event to change our mind. And I don't think anyone is being spiteful on not changing our mind or I, I don't think that that's the reason. I really didn't wanna speak because I'm so conflicted inside. It's ripping me apart at my job, at home, in the grocery store. So for you to think that I am heartless and selfish and dismissive, I am not. I have listened. I have read countless things on social media and they have not been kind to any of us in this room. So please understand that we hear you, I hear you, and my heart is broken and it hears you. And you're not alone. And I am saying that as an alumni. I am not saying that as a school committee member. And sorry, the last thing I wanna have is for any FHS senior to walk out of graduation, whether you wanna have graduation at the high school, at the field, at Old Silver, at the band shell. The last memory I want is for it to be sour. Because I don't, because I went away to school. I didn't come home in the summer. I traveled after college and I made a conscious decision to come home and meet someone who was also from Falmouth and raise our family. I made that decision. I didn't get stuck here. Came back because I love this town and I love the community. That's all.
Graduation is the culmination of 12 years of overcoming individual challenges. From the excitement of the first day of first grade with the families gathered at the bus stop taking pictures, to repeating that first day step at Morse Pond, Lawrence, and then the high school. Study at night or before school for a test, playing with friends in great games, cheering friends on, attending or competing in the science fair, overcoming physical, intellectual, or emotional challenges. You are some of the most caring people I've ever seen. If the school can create one more moment for each of you to focus on your own achievement, accepting that diploma that you've earned over 12 years, then it's done its job. You all have done your job. To our school district staff, I'm unwilling to, and this part is not directed at anybody in particular, more of an overview comment. I'm unwilling to shake an Etch A Sketch and erase all of the sincere empathy and the hard work this past year you did to try to do, do the right thing at every juncture. This leg of that journey, some of us may have a disagreement about a physical location only. That's okay and it's healthy. I would like to humbly request that the staff, students, and families who are currently not in agreement on this topic, to please to work to build bridges and move forward in general. The positive energy that I witnessed amongst these three groups this year is incredible. It happened. I saw it. I felt it. I lost a classmate when I was in high school. And even though it was more than 30 years ago, it sits with me today. It made an impact on me and I carry that to this day. Owen Higgins and James Lavin will be with you, inspiring you regardless of where you are or what you're doing. You yourselves, just by enjoying each day, you personally are the best tribute ever. As far as honoring James and Owen, you have, you are, you will.
Any other school committee people like to make any comments?
Just a comment. I think if there's any validity in what we have experienced as a school committee over the last several months in meetings and obviously since December. I, I think it's only a validation that we need to vote on this. I don't know if that's legal. I don't know if we, it's, it's appropriate. Initially, when you look at those state regulations, no, we don't have to vote on this. But I think if it's any validity to us as a school committee, I think we need to take that step. I don't know what direction we need to go because I'm not sure of legalities. I'm not so sure of lawsuits, which to me is ridiculous. Excuse me. When I come back to the principle in me, it's about the kids. So that's where I'm at.
There's only, the only way we can vote on something is if there's a motion on the floor in that second.
Then I'll make the motion.
What's your motion?
The motion would be to validate the students' move to Fuller Field for graduation.
Will you define the word validate?
To accept it.
So your motion is to move graduation to Fuller Field?
Yes.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Further discussion?
Melissa? It's okay to change our minds. It's okay to stand our ground and it's okay to change our minds.
Discussion? So I haven't said anything. I'm just overwhelmed with sadness at this point. I wanna compliment the students here. You have acted with incredible maturity. I wanna compliment the people in the audience. Let's go. I work as a divorce mediator and I have clients come into my office. People have been married for 30 years. And she says up and he says down. He says right and she says wrong. And I see them missing each other after being married for 30 years. And I see us missing each other. I understand, no, I probably don't understand what the students are feeling. What bothers me is some of the comments that have been made about Ms. Taylor and Ms. Gans. I know Ms. Taylor fairly well, having been chair over the last couple of years and working with her. I know Mary less well. But I do know that every decision that Nancy has made, she always goes back. She, she has this foundation as to what she feels is best for students and that she makes her decisions. She literally makes hundreds, if not thousands, of decisions a year. Mary the same way. I don't expect to agree with every decision she makes. I'd be really surprised if I did. And then you multiply it by nine, school committee people. And then you multiply by the community and so forth. So it upsets me when I hear people say that either Ms. Taylor or Ms. Gans lied. Now, I wasn't in every conversation that she had or they had with everybody. But I bet an awful lot of money that they didn't lie because I know them. Do I think that there's been miscommunications back and forth? Yeah. I do support the decision that Ms. Taylor has made. I know it's unpopular with a lot of you here. And I know it's popular with a lot of people who aren't. But I know how she made the decision. So there is a motion on the floor to move graduation, Falmouth High School 2017 graduation to Fuller Field. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All, any abstentions? So the motion does not pass. So we heard an awful lot about the football team, of which we're all very, very proud. Football, you know, when you talk about, why do you have football? Why does a school have football? Part of it's the physical activity, but what you also hear is it promotes teamwork. It promotes teamwork. You get all these people, 40, 50 guys, working in the same direction, working with each other. We talked about the same thing about basketball, soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, gymnastics, whatever. Everybody's working together. Now we've got a choice. Every single person in this room now has a choice. How do we work together when we disagree? What do we do now? Graduation is going to be at the Fieldhouse. The decision has been made. The school committee has voted. So now, as you leave tonight, where do you put your energy? What do you wanna do? How do you move on from this? You gonna go on Facebook, call us all lots of bad names and all that kinda stuff? Or are you gonna show up at school and say, alright, this is, the decision is made? How do we make this graduation the best graduation ever? What can we do? I know Ms. Taylor is more than willing and has, than having conversations. I know Ms. Gans has been doing that. I don't know what you wanna do. But whatever you wanna do, I will support it and I know the rest of the school committee will support it. I've heard things like, excuse me? That's not gonna happen. You heard the vote. And so now, I'm gonna go back to the question. And so now, I'm gonna go back to the question I asked. As you leave, now what do you do? Where do you take? What do you want to have happen? Thank you all for your time. All right, everybody back. Thank you all. All right. Next item on the agenda is act on superintendent's evaluation. Leah?
Okay. I actually need the remote for the projector, I think. Do you have that? We have to go around this. Okay.
I think it fits on there.
It did, okay.
Yeah.
Does someone have the Mac remote?
I do. Mm-hmm. Here's something here. Okay. Apple TV 2 or?
I think so.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you. Okay, so in our last school committee meeting, we went over the process of the evaluation and went over the group ratings. And we did not act on those ratings. So since that time, after going over the process and really what it means to be exemplary as Nancy being a model of some aspects of this evaluation, some school committee members wanted to relook at their evaluation, and so we actually have a revised overall evaluation and individual evaluations have been revised to really highlight some of the areas that we think Nancy Taylor has really excelled in this year and been a model. So this is just going through all those things that I showed the last time, but I do want to show that with the progress on goals. So we have moved on the district improvement goal. For number three, Nancy has moved from met to exceeded. That is the change in our new revised evaluation. And in our second standard, which is management and operation, we have moved, this was big here, so I could see this. Let me see yours. Can you turn to the big here? Sorry, it's so small there. Moved in the laws, ethics, and policies that Nancy is exemplary in that area. So we have exemplary in the environment, laws, ethics, and policies, and the fiscal system for the management and operation. And that moved Nancy to the exemplary rating for this standard. In family and community engagement, we have revised the shared responsibilities, really about collaborating with community stakeholders and families, and the family concerns, addressing family and community concerns. We've moved Nancy to exemplary in those two areas. And so she is exemplary as a final ranking for that standard also. In professional culture, highlighted the area of continuous learning, which is really, we addressed that tonight in really talking about the reflective nature of Nancy and how really taking all considerations into account and really making sure that she's seeing all sides of the story and understanding what's best for all. And that came with this continuous learning and moving forward in that way. So what that basically came down to is that there were the two standards, areas of management operation and family and community engagement that moved to the exemplary rating. So I want to thank everyone for taking the time to really, really think about Nancy as our school's leaders and consider these aspects of really where Nancy is a model. So that's it. If anyone has any comments about this process?
I just want to say thank you for helping walk us through it again and for being willing to revisit it all because I know it made a lot more work, but I appreciate it.
I did it when I was the chairman for the collaborative, and it is a lot of work. So, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you. I mean, this isn't sympathy, it's empathy.
I appreciate that. And I appreciate everyone taking the time to really, really think about Nancy and all of her aspects of leadership and to really think about this, where she is a model. So Nancy, do you want to say anything?
I just really appreciate it, and I appreciate you, you as a committee acknowledging my work and certain pockets where I excel, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
So I would like to bring this to a vote because we're gonna act on adopting this revised evaluation. And so would someone like to put a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the revised evaluation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you.
Any opposed?
Oh, any opposed?
Any abstentions?
She could just tell it was everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Leah. All right. Next item on the agenda is act on the school's start times recommendation from the task force. So I would like to make a motion. I move that the school committee support and endorse the creation of a new task force in partnership with other departments and organizations in town to broaden and expand the scope of the present wellness committee to improve the health and wellness services we offer to our students.
Was that a motion?
That was, yeah. I moved it.
Who's second?
Any discussion?
I just have a question. Will there be, I'm wondering about like organizationally, if there'll be administrative leadership to try and help us, help the wellness, this new task force? Who's gonna be leading them? Who's gonna help?
I'm. Go ahead.
My plan is there will be an administrator to help, to drive changes that the wellness committee comes up with and agrees on. And how we implement those changes into the district, I think would need an administrator.
I think so too. I just wanted to make sure there was gonna be some administrative support to actually get some stuff. Moving. Thank you.
Further discussion?
I would just like to reiterate that I've been very extremely passionate, not only about school start times, but I can't unhear all of the comments that were brought forth to us during this process, and I'm really looking forward to the next phase of this, having a new task force and putting a lot more emphasis on the health and wellness of the whole student. So I'm really looking forward to working on this project.
Just a question. Are you gonna oversee the next phase of it? I would, I would hope that you are. Who are you addressing that to? You. I don't know whether I'll even be here in two weeks. Oh, let's hope so. Let's make sure that happens.
Me neither.
I won't.
Assuming you are, will you still be the overseer of the process? If I am here in two weeks, it will be up to the next chair to make appointments to this. Okay.
And I think the group should probably come together and figure that out.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment, just that I really appreciated the thoughtfulness and the process for this, and thank you everyone for it and for coming back with this recommendation to really take it to that next level, really diving deeper, so thanks.
And Sonya, I hope you've heard what she just said because that's directed at you. Yeah. You weren't here to hear that last time.
We had a lot of praise.
Yeah. A lot of work. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion?
Terry also had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay. I would just say a quick comment from me personally is that I'm a secondary school educator because of all my years. So one thing I learned a lot about was the elementary side of school by listening to all the comments from those, many, many comments.
Good point.
So it was a good learning curve for me. Thank you.
I appreciate everything you have done on the school start times task force from both the current task force as it sits now, as well as where it sort of got its start under previous administration. And I, even from before I had the honor of sitting at this table, I appreciated your guidance and your even keel through all of the conversations, when they were rocky and when they were smooth, and when there was no wind in the sails, quite honestly. You kept us going, and Sonya, you did a great job as well with the survey changes this past summer and the comments, keeping everything in line. It really was, it was an education for me, and I was proud to be a part of it. So I just really want to say thank you.
So you're saying I have a lot of hot air to blow into this?
No. So you're a good captain.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You and Sonya did a great job, and I think there were, I don't think we missed anything with the exception of there was really no decision, but there couldn't have been a decision. And I think that was good because it opened so many avenues and so many doors to better this district, for the students, for the educational, for the instructional. I just think it gives us a lot more to work on in a really positive manner. And that's good when we go through the committee and kind of hit the brakes a little bit and realize that there's a lot more we can do instead of just changing times. So, well done. Well done to both of you and the whole committee, yes.
Further comments? There's a motion on the floor, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. All right, moving on, conducting routine business, approving the minutes from April May I get a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting for April 25th?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 25th.
Give a second.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Superintendent's report. Nancy?
I don't, I did not submit a briefing this week.
Okay.
Now you tell us because I went looking through my iPad over and over.
I missed something.
Are there any issues that anybody can think about that they would like Nancy to Okay, moving along. Sonya, anything that you would like to highlight from your report?
Just that Zach and I also worked, Ryan and one of his student filming members came in, so the closing quotes is also currently carrying on Channel 14 if you would like to hear our student bulletin when it's doing next in event. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Sonya?
Seal of biliteracy. Were we able to give any students a seal of biliteracy last?
So we are doing the testing. Okay. And so waiting for the results in terms of what that would mean for their level of proficiency because the seal is in effect, you know, officially adopted. But we are just doing the assessments to determine what the levels of proficiency are for our students and working as a way to recognize that. So they are gonna receive certificates, just recognizing their proficiency at the formal award ceremony.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Sonya? Can you answer questions on Zach's report? Does anybody have any questions on Zach's report? You don't have to. All right. Any questions, or Charles, anything that you would like to highlight from your report?
No, thank you. The numbers are the numbers right there. They're moving targets, so they're probably already different.
Thank you for updating us. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Charles? Thank you. Cindy, anything that you would like to highlight from your report?
Numbers are numbers. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Cindy?
Just a comment. Appreciate your dedication to the MCAS and having those kids basically pre-prepare so they don't go in and look like, gee, what am I doing? I think that's fantastic because there's so many glitches when we don't prepare. Thank you.
And just on that note, I just want to call up the Lawrence School under Tom Bushy because they did an amazing job with MCAS.
Good.
School of 600 students testing at one time.
Testing at the same time.
His team.
They did an amazing job, and it was all about the pre-planning.
So Cindy, as we look at the numbers, and thank you for providing them to us, as you move forward, are there any particular areas that you, well, I guess I don't want to load the question. Is there an intention to add more mobile devices to any of these?
I think it's, if anything, we would be looking to possibly reallocate as we, for instance, some of the Chromebooks in our one-to-one schools are already starting to get close to aging out, so we are looking, we can't replace them all at once. So we have to start the process a little sooner, which means that we can reallocate some of those machines that may have, they're end of life, but they still may be functional for one to two years, and want to try and get as much use out of those as we can and put those into other areas. I am watching the lower grades because it's not our intention to be one-to-one in the lower grades. So I am trying to watch that. It is a balance. So if anything, it probably be more being able to reallocate those probably in areas at the high school.
Thank you. Were there any questions?
I don't know if it's a, I guess it's a question. So there's kind of a difference between some of the schools in terms of their ratio. So like Mullen Hall is a half to one, and Lawrence is 1.37 to one. So, I mean, I guess those aren't comparable because they're different age groups. Right. And some of that comes from the fact that it's, that they come from different sources. FEF provides a lot of grants, and anytime now, these numbers are gonna switch. Right. Because I don't know what some of the grants are going to bring to us with mobile devices. I actually know that we have seen proposals come through for, for instance, more iPads or Chromebooks. Whether or not that is fulfilled or not will yet to be determined, but that may shift things. And, but I do try, you know, we are trying to make sure that things are equitable among our schools, but at the same time, and so we do try and support that. I've met even the elementary, this was a different, a year ago, there were a couple of our schools that were really, their numbers were off, so we were able to provide some additional devices. I guess that's sort of what my question is, like, the numbers are varied, but when you see these numbers, do you feel like that they're, that those comparable schools are pretty equitable? Like, does it, would it feel pretty much the same? Except for that, except for Mullen Hall, they really are. Right. I guess that's the outlier. That's sort of.
I guess that's the outlier, that's sort of what I'm asking.
It is. And so that, I get these, we will, well, we've been watching the numbers all along, but we did a fresh look of this, this past week, we've been really digging in because we, we've had different, there's been some grants come in and we don't look at these every day, is my point. So now in planning for the future, I'm looking at Mullen Hall, knowing that there's some need and now, so they are on my radar. But the other point is, I have to make sure that the message going forward, I don't think we need to be looking at one-to-one at our early, with our earliest of children.
Right.
So it is a little bit of balancing. We want to be able to have access to technology, equity of resources for our teachers, for our students, but at the earlier grades, I do believe in balance.
Okay. That's awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Any other questions for Cindy? Thank you, Cindy. Patrick, anything that you would like to highlight from your report?
No.
Any questions for Patrick? I don't have a question, but I have a comment. So number two, so there is a field, there is a committee that is working on the relocation of the football field. So I would assume that that committee would bring to us when they wanted on the agenda as opposed to the school committee.
Yeah, we don't.
We would encourage, yeah, we would encourage that it be on the agenda over the next couple of months.
And I think, I think the way I read this, maybe I'm wrong, is that we want to make sure that that project is moved up in the capital plan.
That it remains a priority.
Yeah. I think in our original capital plan, it wasn't where we would like it to be moving forward. We'd like to move it up.
Okay. Just, just the way it was written.
I understand.
Yeah. Okay. So, put it on the agenda or we will.
We'll do that.
Walter?
Just to add something to his point number one on the opioid issue, Nancy knows this, Charlie knows this. I'll be along with some other people who are making a presentation to the entire sixth grade class at Morse Pond School on Monday outlining the dangers of experimentation. The new experiment grade now is seven. So we're going to educate them in a, in a one-on-one conversation on what that's going to lead to if they decide to experiment. And the biggest issue, anxiety certainly one, but social is another one. Friends are going to say, hey, you need to try this, it's going to make you feel great. But they don't know what that's going to lead to and that's what we're going to get into. So hopefully, the goal of that presentation is when that situation presents itself, which to a lot of it will, they'll be able to make an educated decision on what they're getting themselves in for. I did this when I was the athletic director and health instructor at the school, I was at, and it was very effective. And I walked the kids through how it was going to happen, what it was going to lead to, what it was going to be like, and I got a lot of feedback that they said, hey, thanks for letting us know and we made the right decision when it presented itself. So we're going to at least start with the sixth grade before they get into the thing and then depending on what Nancy wants to do, we may, you know, do the other grades later.
And you met with Mr. McLaughlin and Joanne Sykes and they're putting together a panel?
Yeah. In fact, I'm going to meet with them again this week and just, you know, walk through the whole sequence of it. So I think that's, I think that, to me, in my opinion, that's the biggest thing, is educating them ahead of time on what that experimentation is going to lead to. It's not going to be just fun and games with their friends. It's going to lead to bad things and they need to know that. So as I say, they can make an educated decision when the situation presents itself, which it will for most of it.
So there, so there, it's you and other, I'm sorry, I'm getting really tired. It's a panel?
It's a panel. That's my understanding.
It's not one-on-one? I heard you say one-on-one.
Well, I'm making, I'm making the basic presentation, then we're going to have the panel chime in and reinforce issues.
I just want to just make sure that it's, because there's a lot of research around whether or not, like, which types of education around substance abuse are most effective. So I just want to make sure that we're not just winging it.
No, I think they've been planning this for a couple of months now. They've met as a group with Mr. McLaughlin, with the school adjustment counselor. I believe Gosnell will be represented on the panel, so I think it's, people coming with different perspectives.
Letting them know what it's going to lead to is the best education they can get.
As long as it's not scare techniques because we know that those don't work. They can actually do the exact opposite.
Well, like I said, it's an interview. I make them participate. It's not a lecture, it's a dialogue.
I have a particular sixth grader, I hope you kept the message through real loud.
We have a letter at home.
Well, my plan, my plan at the end, just to conclude her on the right notice, is to say now, now that you've realized what this is going to lead to, what it's going to do to your life, how many people have decided that they will not experiment when their friends suggest that they do it? Hopefully, everybody says, well, I said, well, great, then it's been effective. So make sure you stick with that, make sure you remember.
Anything else?
Yes. Number three, we have a small handful of open positions. Is the HR position one of those?
It will be as soon as the superintendent approves it. We're in position to do that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions for Patrick? All right, moving on. Report from the chair. A few things. I want to remind everybody that the next school committee meeting on the 23rd, I guess it is, will be at 4:30 at the Kunamesset Inn because that is the evening of the VIPS dinner. 4:30, correct, Sharon's?
The mermaid room.
The mermaid room.
Someone bring a flag so we don't have that debacle.
4:30 at the Kunamesset.
I'll bring one.
Second thing, I got this letter, so I'm assuming everybody got this letter from the guidance department about the evening of recognition of awards and scholarships. Did you all get this?
It was sitting at our seat.
Good, okay. I just wanted to make sure you all got that. Also, along those same lines, got a discard from Pat Pilow inviting us to the award ceremony to honor students attaining proficiency in a foreign language, in English. It is on Monday, May 22nd, from 6:30 until 8:00, Falmouth High School Auditorium, light refreshments to follow, musical selections courtesy of the Jazz Concert. So that is May 22nd, 6:30. You're all invited. And the last piece, I'm very, 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 very pleased to report that the school committee has ratified a tentative agreement with the Falmouth Educators Association, subject to their vote, which is scheduled for May 17th, that we have ratified their contract. Very, very happy to report that. Any questions for me? Any reports from committee members? Leah?
I am going to put out a date for our retreat, August 22nd.
And do we have a time, evening, afternoon?
Not yet.
When is the road race?
I gave my dates to Sharon, so I assume that 22nd is not on that date.
Nope. I've got, you know, for everybody who gave me, gave Sharon the dates, and I'm saying we're going to meet on the 22nd.
It's the Tuesday after the road race.
Yeah. A perfect time to meet when everyone is feeling nice and healthy.
Traffic getting used.
Do we know yet what time and where or not? Does that just appear to be determined?
No. Nope. So hold that day.
Holding the day.
Day is held.
Okay. Any other reports from committee members?
I don't have a report, I have a follow-up question.
Go right ahead.
Maybe, I don't know if I addressed it to Sonya. The kids just went to France and they came back. Could we get a couple of them in here to tell us about it? Oh, good. Okay. It's already on the agenda.
I think you did request that.
Oh, I already did? Am I an option about France?
No, no, no. Sorry.
Say lovey, honey.
Any other reports from committee members? Any requests for follow-up information?
Sorry, I jumped the gun.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'll do it later, doesn't matter.
There is no later.
We have a budget subcommittee on the 23rd from 3:30 to 4:30 and then the school committee starts at 4:30. That's going to be a little tight.
I wrote the same question. Something that we should check, check on tomorrow.
Okay.
You'll let us know.
Thank you.
Any other? So before we adjourn, as everyone knows, it's very, it's in my mind, very sad, we're losing one of our school committee.
We're not losing her, she's just not sitting at the table.
Because we know where to find her. I can't thank you enough for everything that you have done over the years. I can't thank you enough for all the guidance that you've given me over the last couple of years. Anybody else wants to make any comments?
I'll make a comment. Susan, you were an inspiration through the years before I decided to run. I watched you and being able to sit with you at the table has been an honor.
Thanks, you guys are killing me.
Oh, we're just starting.
It's bad, these guts got to drive home.
Thanks for everything you've given us, to Falmouth, to the students, to the district. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't say much because I'll just leave it. So, thank you.
You should be able to receive one hell of a paycheck, but I don't think that's going to happen. Congratulations and...
Thanks. It's been fun. As you all noticed tonight, it wasn't all peace, love and happiness, but sometimes you have to make those hard decisions.
So I'd like to read something. This is a proclamation for Susan Augusta, May 9th, 2017. Whereas, school board member Susan Augusta was elected to sit in trust for the Falmouth community and in that capacity, charged with meeting the community's expectations and aspirations for the public education of their children. And, whereas, Susan Augusta was entrusted with the guardianship and wise expenditure of tax dollars and was responsible for maintaining and preserving the buildings, grounds and other areas of the school district that the community has put in her trust. And, whereas, Susan Augusta shared responsibility for providing leadership that ensures a clear, shared vision of public education for their schools that sets high standards for the education of all students and requires the effective and efficient operation of their district. And, whereas, Susan Augusta adopted public policy to give voice to that leadership and employ a superintendent to administer board policy and was also responsible for regular monitoring of the district's performance and compliance with state policy. And whereas, Susan Augusta selflessly, selflessly volunteered countless hours to public service with no compensation. And whereas, decisions made by Susan Augusta directly impacted the quality of life in the Falmouth community, placing her at the front line of American democracy. Therefore, being resolved by the Falmouth School Committee that we proclaim, May 9th, 2017, as Susan Augusta Day. As a way to honor her for her devotion of time and energy for the successful education of our children. It is official. Today is Susan Augusta Day.
Should have just said, and with grace.
That's one calendar day we all agree on, Susan.
Thank you, Susan. Anything else?
I'm supposed to remodel my house with this telephone.
We do that. We do that. Anything else?
Thank you.
I'd simply like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor?
I think Susan should second.
Okay, sorry. Susan.
All in favor? We are adjourned.